Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. With that, we have you please stand with me for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible and infinite in its essence.
Well, we're going to be honored today by having a special presentation by the tone setters and invite, I think, maybe Jerry Herman to introduce all of you, to all of you.
We'll come right up, Mayor, and we'll part of our presentation and we'll introduce ourselves.
Okay, very good.
Anyway. All right. I hope this will work. We were instructed to kind of stand in this order.
Sure.
Either backs towards the commission.
We know who's important.
We're the tone setters. We're from four points, north, south, east and west. Our tenor, Ken, is from Oregon City. Brian is from Camby. He's our lead, which is really important. We've got to follow the lead melody line. The bass, Basal here, is from Oregon City. His name is Wayne Markham. I'm Jerry Herman. We're part of Oregon's oldest barbershop chorus, the Oregon Trail Pitchpipers. Oregon Trail Pitchpipers, that's something like a good marketing name. Forty-six years it's been around. We've got the best show in the Northwest coming up on February 11th. Information out there, pretty information. We are here to spread harmony in government. We are going to kick off the legislative session on February 1st at the governor's request for the state of Oregon. The second time we've asked, and after you.
Congratulations.
The old songs, the old songs, the good old songs for me. I love to hear those minor chords and get close on morning. Down our way both night and day, you know everybody and they all know you. And even the mayor says, "How do you do?" Alpide's score, he goes along, and that old gang of mine, we sang Sweet Caroline. And my dear heart, oh, you I pine. In all my dreams, your fair face be. You're the flower of my heart, Sweet Caroline, Sweet Caroline.
I have one more song for you, and you can think about this in terms of how it's written. It's about a boy and a girl sitting in the house while it rains outside ruining their plans for yet another day. Or you can think about it as not a boy and a girl, but you have your public servants and the public they serve sitting around in kind of rainy weather economically. Either way, what the guy has to say to the girl is right on to start a new year. Oh, do I remember what the pitch was? Yeah, wait.
On a Sunday morning, Saturday morning, with her sweetheart by her side. Through the window pane, she looked at the rain. We must stay for joy, she cried, she cried. There's a picnic too at the old point view. It's a shame, it's lame today too. Then the boy grew here, kissed away each tear, and she heard him softly say, "Why don't you wait till the sunshine's nearly, when the clouds go drifting by? We will be happy nearly, don't you cry? The man lovers they will wonder, sweetheart, you and I. Wait till the sunshine's nearly, by the bay, by the bay."
We're the tone setters. We're the tone setters.
We actually have a lot of talent in Oregon City, and maybe we can get things like this going a little more frequently. A good way to start our new year. The, I hope in the process, we simply don't wait for the sunshine, that we do something to bring it along. But with that, we're going to go ahead, and our next action here is to elect our commission president for the year. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Rocky. Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Second.
Did you want to make a speech first? Is that it?
No. No, no. Maybe nominate someone else.
Somebody want to nominate somebody else?
No.
Okay. The city recorder will go ahead, and we've got a written ballot that we could use, I guess, but I don't know.
Secret ballot? Actually, the charter says buy ballot.
Okay, with that, with that in mind.
There you go.
Let me give you a piece of paper. There's four of them right there.
Oh, she already did it.
How do you spell your name?
She already did it.
Oh, sorry.
Did you look at mine?
No, I didn't. Thanks, Mike.
And with that, the not-so-secret, secret ballot, would you please?
Rocky Smith, times four.
Very good.
Congratulations, Rocky.
You won't make a speech now?
No.
You can make a speech.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We have here a presentation by Clackamas Heritage Partners regarding a grant application for the end of the Oregon Trail Interpreters Center. This is an active item on our list. We have somebody here that's going to speak to that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. I'm Dan Fowler, and I currently serve as President of Clackamas Heritage Partners, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We are here because we have an opportunity to submit a grant to a foundation that's here locally, and it's the Lennox Foundation. And it is a foundation that requires that you be sponsored by a family member, and we have been sponsored or encouraged to apply for this foundation by a family member, Kristen Kramer, who's here in the audience. And it is just an application at this point. There's no granting or guarantee of a grant, but it is our hope that we can achieve funding in the level of $50,000 to $100,000 to help the improvements at the end of the Oregon Trail. And the grant application needs to be turned in by January 15th. So in the efforts of full disclosure, I'm willing to work as a partner with the city because we are currently running the visitor center there for Clackamas County. We wanted to come before tonight and talk about it a little bit. In that efforts, we have met with Scott Archer, Parks Director, and we've met with Rocky Smith about the grant and explored possible ideas for the grant. And the grant, we believe, can work under the current arrangement that we have with the city whereby if there ever is need to be in the facility, that's been working really well under the current arrangement with Scott and the city. And the grant is primarily education-focused, but it's not absolutely limited to that. And so we have explored a number of things from an educational standpoint that we could obviously use the money for, everything from upgrading Bound for Oregon to improving the Ochsman program, to having more interpreters for school groups that come to the visitor center and are talked about and learning about the end of the Oregon Trail. But we know that there's also some maintenance and capital improvements there, and we've discussed some of those with Scott Archer, and we'll do so again before this grant. It's our full intention to do so before this grant is applied for. And it's our thought that if we're receiving, depending on what we receive, that maybe we can help with some of the maintenance there. The awnings need cleaning and improved. Maybe we can help with the roof, depending on the ultimate cost of that and what the city might have budgeted, if they have anything budgeted for that. And we appreciate the maintenance and the work that's been done with the decks and the fencing and the things the cities have done there over the course of the last year has been very, very helpful. But it would be our intention to help in any way we can with some of those that are realistic. And what we're really here for, and we emailed some of this, I don't know what material you have, and I apologize. Hopefully, you've seen some of it. We have until the 14th to finalize our application, and really what we're asking is that you would authorize Scott to add a letter of support for that application. Between now and the 14th, we would, I know he's been on vacation, and it's the holiday time, so it's been, we've been working fast, but it's an opportunity that we don't want to let slip. There's no guarantee, but we feel good about the possibility of some funding, and we wanted to just be a partner with the city and have the city at least be aware, and then partner with us in endorsing the application, and we'll see if we're successful or not, so. And there's other people here that could speak to it, or if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or have Gail or anyone else.
Kind of the point of the commission, we do adopt agenda after we've had citizens' comments. We could, perhaps can invite them after we've had the citizens' comments. Does that work for you?
Sure, sure, that's fine. So we really just, we're seeking to be a partner in it, but, and not that you're a partner in the application, but that we're there, that we have a letter of support. And we're seeking those letters of support from TDC also, and I might add that we just closed out the year, and our visitor counts were up 19% for the year at the End of the Oregon Trail Visitor Center.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
With that, I'll make sure I get this right here, but I believe we have citizens' comments before us now. Anybody that wishes to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda can come forward. We ask you to restrict your comments to three minutes. There's a timer that's visible right here, and there's a timer that's closer to the item. We'll be bringing up people here two at a time, and right at the moment, I have, it looks like about four people wish to speak. Darren, is it Darren Carr or Darren Kerr?
Darren Carr.
Darren Carr. And Tom Guy, would you please come forward?
I guess I've been passed on the option to speak first. My name is Darren Carr. I'm from West Lynn, Oregon, and I operate and own a business called Big D's Floatin' Pig Barbecue. During the fishing season, I sell food to fishermen on the Willamette River, and I accommodate their hunger needs. I've had the best success while tied up to the dock at John Storm Park, and come to realize that I'm not supposed to be tied up to the dock in selling for a couple of reasons, one being that Oregon City doesn't allow food carts, and the other being that you're not supposed to sell merchandise or whatnot in a park. So I'm here to do a couple of things, address the no-food cart rule, and also ask for permission from the city to sell in a city park. Three minutes is kind of hard to wrap up a multiple-hour conversation, so what I'm going to do is just kind of break down to the meat of what my argument is. We all know that there are some rights in this country that are given to us or actually protected by the U.S. Constitution, and a couple of those rights are the right to liberty and the right to pursue happiness. And there are also some rights that really can't be found in the Constitution or in any other laws that are in the United States, and one of which is the right to not have competition, or the right to have fair competition. You just can't find it. It's not there. We all know that competition breeds innovation, and innovation's a good thing, and I believe that's what food carts would bring to the industry. I've done a little bit of research on the reasons that the city doesn't allow food carts, and I find them personally to be unconstitutional and not to the best interest of the citizens of Oregon City. For example, the innovation makes better products, and products that are less expensive for the citizens. So these are good things that we want. And it kind of seems like the citizens were left out of the conversation when it came to the decisions to not have food carts, because honestly, when you look at it, it seems to be something that would be best for the citizens. There was a 2008 study conducted by the Portland Bureau of Planning and a group of urban planners with master's degrees and, you know, some big shots or whatever, that the study showed some very significant benefits to having food carts. I can go over some of the highlights if you wish, or if not, you can look at the study yourself. All right, I'll take that as a yes, go over them. They say food carts have a positive impact on street vitality and neighborhood life in lower-density residential neighborhoods, as well as high-density downtown area. When a cluster of food carts is located in private site, the heightened intensity of use can negatively impact the surrounding community primarily from the lack of trashcans. It's a negative thing, but it's something easily, you know, taken care of and handled. The presence of food carts on the site does not appear to hinder its development.
What's going on in the second sheet? You've hit your three minutes, but.
Oh, have I? I apologize.
No, that's okay. What you can do is you could, if you, we could make copies of that and have it distributed to the members of the commission.
Okay.
I think maybe there's some other issues, and I was wondering if the city manager would want to comment.
Well, I haven't met with Mr. Carr, but I know some of our staff, I think, have had conversations with them, and.
The facility is actually funded by State Marine Board, and I think there were some constraints there, too. Is there not?
That's correct. You know, I don't want to comment on this here because I'm not prepared to address his arguments, but I do believe that there are legal issues here that we probably want the city attorney to look at as well. And so I'd like to invite him, if he wants to submit his request to me, then we'll investigate it and get him a response back.
Okay.
And then from there, if the commission wants to take the matter up, eventually it will work its way through our system, and if there are denials at the staff level, then it's the commission's prerogative if they want to change that.
Right.
I don't think you can change the State Marine Board requirements, but you can probably write letters.
I think you're kind of stuck there.
Yeah.
This is just a staff question, really. We put a lot of work into creating a food cart program, and that lasted about a week, I think, until we, until the city actually realized that there wasn't, that it was against our code to have a food cart program, but, and then it just kind of went away. You know, personally, I don't want to see Oregon City become to the level of Portland with food carts, but I definitely think that the program itself that was brought to us originally by staff was really exciting, and I don't know if there's a plan in the future to, you know, bring that back and address the code issues that deal with no food carts. And if staff doesn't plan to, I think we really should talk about it, because I think it's an important thing to look, it's a possibility to look at more, and if we are interested in the future and going to make some changes on the code to adapt to that, I think we should.
One distinction you want to be careful to make here is the difference between these kinds of operations in your city parks versus food carts generally somewhere else. And, you know, if the commission wants to explore changing the code around those concepts to include both or either of those, you can let us know, and we'll put it on for a work session at some point.
I'd like to see it come onto a work session, personally.
Are there any, can you give a little bit more direction with regard to whether it's in the parks? Because you have a lot of restrictions.
Sometimes we have special events at our parks, which we have.
Well, yeah, I don't know if that applies to special events, because.
Yeah, so.
No, there are exceptions for special events for concessionaires.
Yeah.
That isn't, I don't think what, I think every day is a special event when you're trying to be in business, so it's.
Yeah. For my discussion purposes, I'm more interested in the code issue. I'm not so interested necessarily in the park issue, but I think we need to make it available to have food carts in the city, possibly, so that's where I'd, that's what I'd like to see done.
Let me suggest that I'll have the, I'll have the planning department put together a memo on the food cart issue, and if you, did that work session that you referenced, Commissioner Smith, occur before I started working? Because I don't recall.
The program?
Yeah, that program you're talking about must have been a few years back.
That's offline.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
It's a very exciting story.
Okay. So we'll research that, and we'll get that, you know, get that out to the commission, and then after you see the memo, if you want further follow-up, let us know.
Could you, in your research, bring in the Marine Board regulations?
Will do.
Okay, so it's an item that we'll address. We may not address it as soon as you'd like to, but you'd like, but we'll be taking it again.
Well, can we at least make sure we correspond with Darren to make sure he knows when it's, when we're going to have that discussion on the agenda? And, I mean, it might be for a couple months, it might be way out, but at least make sure he knows that.
There's been an exchange of letters, I believe, between he and our Parks Department already, but we couldn't share a date then because we didn't know what the commission's doing.
No, no, but I mean, when we know of one in the future, we should make sure.
I'm supposed to be doing business around the middle of March. Is that too soon to expect any kind of?
Well, we don't know. Yeah. It's just.
If, well, I can try to address that. If the commission were to change their ordinance, change their code, there are limits. They're required to post this a certain number of days and allow for public comments, so to have a code change done by March, even if they wanted to do it at their next opportunity, it would be, it would be stretching it to get it done by then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the notice requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Guy.
New Year. Before I start my comments, I'd like to ask permission or special dispensation. I have to leave within a half hour to go to the airport to pick up some duck vans flying in from Pasadena, even though I should make them walk home since they didn't take me with them. But anyway, I'd like to make some comments about 8B before I leave, so I can get at least on that record.
I don't think we have a problem with that. And we'll give you, we'll give you an extra three then.
Okay. Sorry, I have to leave.
Is that why you're up here?
Yes.
Or just 8B?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, 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 okay.
It touches on that.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine, but you only have three minutes, so.
Right.
You don't get an extra.
I wouldn't want it.
You've already used a.
I know, well, that's why I said before I start. So I'm Tom Guy, obviously, of Oregon City, and I moved here about eight years now from Multoma. I've always been in this area, and I had never had any plans to get politically involved. I was never actively involved in the Portland scene, except to be representative of my southwest neighborhoods on the cable access. And I've volunteered since I've got here in several capacities. I've learned a lot about the political process, and sometimes I've learned it isn't always fair or right, you never know. But I've served as Park Place Neighborhood Secretary as a couple years, four years as PPNA Vice Chair. I've assumed the role of the Park Place Chair for a few months, and I've served as Chair of the CIC, the Citizens' Involvement Council, for the past two years now. And I come before you tonight because I'm a little concerned about the process. Last spring, when I assumed the position of the Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, I wanted to make a positive difference in our neighborhood, so I wanted to involve more people in the process, offer up some fun local events, that's my forte, and make our bylaws more efficient and up to date. So I involved Nick Dirkman and Carter Stein, both of them from kind of opposing camps, you might say, and together we worked through a few changes and alterations to our bylaws. The Steering Committee approved those bylaws to go before the citizenry at the May meeting. These new bylaws were approved by a clear majority, with, I believe, only two against or abstaining, I can't remember which, out of the over 50 in the room. One of those bylaws was a clarification of the process for recommending candidates for the Urban Renewal Commission. I hold in my hand the Urban Renewal Commission bylaws. All that stated was, "The Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and the Park Place Neighborhood Association shall each nominate a minimum of three candidates for city commission consideration and appointment. Representatives of the McLaughlin or Park Place neighborhoods must reside in those neighborhoods' association boundaries." It goes further to say that you should solicit a candidate from the Oregon City North End and solicit candidates from the general public. But that kind of left our neighborhood, as well as McLaughlin, with no clear direction as how to recommend candidates to the city. How is that done? Is it one person does that? Is it the committee, is it this, that? We weren't sure. So therefore, we put it into our bylaws, a clear, established process to determine this. In all neighborhoods, it's the Steering Committee comprised of the most active and involved and knowledgeable people, approved by the neighborhood citizenry that should be responsibly enough to send appropriately vetted, and that's the key word, vetted, and knowledgeable citizens before the commission. Again, it was approved by over 50 people. In a continuation of kind of the divisiveness, a few people are now trying to circumvent those very bylaws to enter a couple more people into the consideration process. Those people have not been active members of our community process, and in fact, I've never seen either of them at a Park Place Neighborhood meeting before that evening. They may be really good people, I really don't know them. They probably, they could be excellent candidates for you. I just don't know them, and if we're going to properly vet somebody, we want to look ourselves, as representatives of the people, at qualifications. If they came in the room tonight, I would not be able to tell you who they are, because all I saw was the back of their heads at that evening. So my point is here, that as Chair of the CIC, and I'm not representing the CIC here tonight, I'm just representing myself, but as a Chair, I'm expected to conduct meetings of the various neighborhoods' representatives and respect their bylaws. And I looked at this, and I questioned how I or anyone else can effectively lead the neighborhoods and look them in the eye and to tell them that they are playing an active role for goal one of communications when their very bylaws may not be recognized by the city. And what good are those bylaws, and what standing do any of the representatives actually have? If the city's own bylaws are possibly vague that the neighborhoods need to create a clarification, which we did, and then the city does not accept an honest attempt by a neighborhood to sincerely clarify the process, then what good are neighborhood bylaws? So somewhere the process is flawed, and if the city chooses this evening to ignore the fact that our properly amended bylaws are not to be followed, then I have the impression that this recognition of all five URC candidates in the Park Place neighborhood only further empowers the continuation of the deep divide in our community, not just in Park Place, but in the city wide. It just will compound itself. So I'd like you to take those thoughts into consideration. Your minds may be made up, but just think about all those Neighborhood Association bylaws. How much of them do we accept as a city or don't listen to?
Thanks.
Thank you very much for my, for your time. My time, too.
And we have next Cathy Hogan and Jackie Hammond-Williams. And you have next Cathy Hogan and Jackie Hammond-Williams. Happy New Year. No, you, I call you in order.
Oh, in order? It's been a long time. Good evening. Cathy Hogan from Haysaboe, Westland Farm Neighborhood Association. I'm going to wear two hats, fill a stocking, fill a heart. I'd like to thank everybody for all the work. Thank you, Rocky. I do know how to spell your name.
Pretty easy.
Yes, it is. For all the help on getting the stuffed animals, we had approximately two hundred and more this year than we had last year. And it sounds already says good, and it's in, how good is having three hundred and twenty, or three, three thousand and two hundred people in that kind of a need? And it was stretching, trying to get some of the supplies. So, I would like to thank everybody that adopted a sock, everybody that gave the teddy bear parade stuffed animals, and thank you for giving them to us.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So, and hey, we're going to have a bingo coming up in April.
Yeah.
So, okay. And then I would just like to say that I agree with Tom on the issue you just said, and I'll probably talk it, on, on the issue then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I know my three minutes, hon. They'll tell me.
Good evening. Jackie Hammond-Williams, Oregon City. Actually, I'm really kind of dittoing what Tom said, and I think you're going to hear a lot more later in the evening. I've been a resident of the city for twenty-two years. I've been active in the Neighborhood Association at Park Place for twenty. Obviously, this year, the city's seen a lot of divisive action around the rivers and the subject of the recall of the Commissioner. And now that has also spread to our neighborhood, which has really saddened me. It's pitted neighbor against neighbor. So there's two comments I really want to make, to be, to be short. One, I think that if people are going to donate time to be on a Neighborhood Association, I think that's what the city wants. They want citizen involvement. If they're going to do that, and they take the time to write the bylaws, then I think the city, I don't know if this should be maybe through the CIC, should maybe take a look at those bylaws, and there be some kind of consensus so they actually mean something. Because when you write bylaws, and then you take votes upon those bylaws, and then you find out that really it's a mute point, it, it gives a lot of frustration to, to people who've been diligent and, and worked hard for the neighborhood. I think you're going to put people off being citizens that are engaged in the city, if this is to continue. And I think you'll hear more of this. But I also think that out of mess and turmoil potentially can come good things. And I would really like this divisiveness and basically nastiness to stop, and for people to really behave and, and be respectful to each other. There's not been a lot of respect at our meetings lately. Rules have been made up. People have been told to be quiet. I mean, I mean, just, just disrespectful stuff. So I just hope that out of this turmoil within the city, this, this past year, 2011, looking forward to 2012, maybe with help from the CIC and the city, we can, we can really look at the, the bylaws of the neighborhoods, and we can move forward in a more positive manner. Because it's really distressing to see our city like this.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a request. People are now speaking. Tom Guyle asks for permission to speak, to speak, because you can stay around for 8B. There will be an opportunity to address that. And anybody that wants to speak to our process in selecting, filling the Urban Renewal Commission vacancy for the Park Place Neighborhood, I, I prefer that you hold off until we get to 8B, because I think other people have other topics, and we actually have a very long agenda.
Yes, they do.
So, so if anybody is, wants to speak to that, please wait until we get to that. With that, I'll call forward Randy Tyler and Paul Edgar.
That's why I waited, so I could have my three minutes.
Ed Darrell.
Ed.
Ed Darrell.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I, I, I got Paul. If you'll excuse me, actually, you're not the next on my list. So, Ed Darrell and Randy Tyler, sorry about that. Not that we necessarily call them up together, but they are in the order there, so.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're back in front of you once again, and I'm Ed Darrell with the Cove Project. Happy New Year to all of you. Before I came over this evening, my wife is from Thailand. She said, "Ed, do you realize what this is?" And I said, "What is it?" She said, "It's the Year of the Cove." Hopefully, she's right. We wanted to just pop in to tell you that we, we are consolidated, we are jointly moving forward. The Clackamette Cove entity has two primary members, which is Pacific Property Search and Woodley Properties. In the last three weeks, we have met, not only with our legal counsel, but jointly, and we've all consolidated our approach. So, everything is, is very positive in that respect. And it's our expectation that we will kick this project off in the spring. And our request is that we have the URA bring forward the DDA and the CRA. For those who aren't familiar with those acronyms, it's the Disposition and Development Agreement and the Conditional reinstatement Agreement. We have submitted those probably three, four, five weeks ago to the city. It's been a nice holiday time, but we'd like to get back on track and make sure that we're going to move everything forward. So we're just popping in to tell you that we are, in fact, moving forward as a group. There was a little bit of divisiveness there in terms of how we're going to do all the projects within the project. That has been concluded, and we want to tell you that we're prepared to move forward. So, a very quick comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want an additional three minutes?
No, I'm just...
Okay, very good. Well, I guess I go to call it Paul Edgar forward then. And William Gifford.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Paul Edgar, the Land Use Chair of the Canema Neighborhood Association. I have, over many years, made requests about the possibility of acquiring the property adjoining Old Canema Park right in the Coffee Creek drainage from a willing seller. Metro has a Metro capital grant program for natural areas. This money is getting harder to get, and we got a notification again that we have an opportunity where we could put in a grant that would, and has the, it has this possibility of covering everything. And this property could be folded into, into the old Canema Park and dramatically enhance it. And it's kind of this opportunity, you feel like it's a once in a lifetime. And I make these requests, and they go into the circular file. I formally asked to have them considered. And for some reason, they never, ever see the light of day. And I just feel, I, I cry because this area below Fifth Avenue has, has an area that's of immense importance for just water resources. And that's one of the critical areas of the Metro Natural Area Enhancement Program. It has trees. It, it, it could really make the old Canema Park more friendly in the sense of trail networks. And it allows us to extend trails right out of there that are part of the natural loop that we want to create into the metro, major metro area in through Canema. All I'm asking for is to remove the log jam. Just remove the log jam. Let's, if we want to ever consider this, fine. If we don't, fine. But I think that, I think it would be an absolute injustice to the citizens of Oregon City and anyone that, that appreciates the environment, that we don't take steps to protect this critical habitat and enhance it in such a way that it's to the best use of not only the, the environment, but the citizens of Oregon City. And just so, please, would you help me remove the log jam? We have some people in the neighborhood that would like to help write the grant application. We just need to have a willing partner. The willing partner is the city of Oregon City, so please. Thank you.
It's just a point of confusion, Paul. Normally, you don't make comments, so I want to clarify something. The city has monies that we're, that we have, I take it you're not talking about?
No, I'm not talking...
Are you talking about the nature of the neighborhoods?
No. I'm talking, Metro has a capital grant program for developing parks and wetlands. When I went through the grant writing class with Metro, we had nine out of ten of the key points that they said were, would wait heavily on the approval. We had nine out of ten that applied to this area. And so they said, "Wow." Kind of like, you really, this is really one that fits perfectly. But yet, it has, we have to have an agreement and a sign-off by the city.
By when?
Well, I think the last I heard was January 31st. We've been, but I've been asking for this for two years.
I think that part of the problem is we don't have a grant writer on staff.
Uh, excuse me. I said, "We have a grant writer." I went through the grant writing school myself.
Right, right.
And we have a grant writer in the neighborhood that was willing to sit down and help write the grant. So there, it's not, there's not a problem in doing that. We just need to have the city say, "Yeah, this is, this is a great opportunity."
I'm confused, because when, when we've had this before us before, it was monies that the city had, detoted a little over a million, that we've allocated some of it already to purchases. And one of them being there actually in the Canema area. And that's the only thing that I recall coming to the commission. I, I don't know if I've heard of this before. I'm confused.
There is the Nature in the Neighborhoods program that has a capital grant program. I know there's a local match.
That's what I was asking, if it was the Nature in the Neighborhoods program.
Maybe it's called, but it's, it's part of the Metro Natural Area, but it's a capital grant program.
I don't know if you need our permission. I think we'll get a letter to support.
No, it does.
Well, there's also a local match, I think, and we'd have to look into the details. Denise and I would have to do some research.
We looked at it, when we, when we took the class and went through it, it looked like we had a fit of all fits. And we've been asking for this to be just considered, and it was, it was outside of all of the other monies that...
Yep. As Nature and Neighborhoods, I understand that. I'm just, I just never remembered that item coming before the commission before.
No, we never, we, we sent the letters to Scott Archer, to the City Commission, and to all of the other people around. I sent it directly to Nancy. And we've done it, again, for over two years. We've been doing, I can pull up all of these emails if you would like to, and all of these, the documentation. But it's kind of like, somewhere along the line, we've got to remove the roadblock and make some things happen that are good, are good for the city, good for the citizens.
Yeah. I'm going to ask that be pursued. I, I just don't remember this coming before the commission in this form before us, so this is a little surprising.
Mayor, we can, we can put it on the agenda, and you can debate it. But if I were, if, if, my recommendation would be that you put it on for a work session.
Yeah.
Because you did purchase a lot of property in, in the last eighteen months.
No, I understand. And I just want to, basically, find out what the Nature of the Neighborhood requirement is in terms of matches or anything.
If that is the grant.
This is a natural, this is a capital grant program.
This, I'm sure it's a Nature of Neighborhoods grant. And I'm familiar with it, but I, I never heard anybody coming before us and asking for one. The College has one, a Nature of Neighborhoods grant for their, for their watershed, New Oak Creek watershed area within the campus. But that's the only, that's the only entity in Oregon City that I'm aware of that has secured a Nature of Neighborhoods grant.
So, can the neighborhood write the grant and ask the city for support? I mean, we don't have to write the grant. It might be good for us to have a little few details. Maybe Denise and I could meet with Paul and find out what's going, the details.
Okay.
This, there's, we once asked for a request to have a, a Nature in the Neighborhood grant for just redoing the right-of-ways within Canema in a green streets thing. This is a capital grants, which far exceeds the limits of that.
Oh, okay.
Of that. The other one had a, had a, what, a thirty thousand dollar matching thing, which required us getting in an agreement with Public Works on making improvements within the right-of...
We'll get together, and we'll find out exactly what this grant is.
But this one is a capital grant thing. Thank you.
Okay. Paul, it's your turn.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I have, I have two topics, so I'll try to be brief. Tonight at 5:30 was a, was a third monthly county roundtable. And I hadn't been to one before, mostly because I don't like to get involved in the county stuff.
Smart guy.
But the two topics that I brought to, to that roundtable were, one, the, the opportunity that Oregon City Public Library has presented to the county to, to purchase a piece of property from the county. And I, we, the CIC, as Secretary of the CIC, I was asked to write a letter to each of the Commissioners and to CC the city admin, to the County Administrator, or whatever he's called. And I apologize for not having the foresight to also CC each of the Commissioners, and I will do that. But basically, it was a letter entreating them to consider negotiating seriously the, the sale of that property to, to the city for, for a library. Last night, I thank the mayor very much for attending the Hillendale Neighborhood Association meeting, where we had a similar resolution, and the, the city of Hillen, or the Neighborhood of Hillendale Association will be, will be sending a letter to the county as well, since it would be right smack in the middle of the, the Hillendale Association, and of course, everybody wants it. When I mentioned this to the, to the county, one of the Commissioners said that they had received it, and they, they were concerned about a deadline, which I thought was a little ironic, considering some of the deadlines that we have received from the county. But one of the other, one of the other Commissioners made a comment about how there was a master plan already for that area, and I'm trying to encourage them to reconsider their master plan. So we'll see where that goes. I just wanted to give you an update on that. The second subject that I, that I, that I brought to them was the subject of broadband, and how I think that most people, I would, I would say almost everybody in Oregon City, everybody in the county wants broadband. It would be very nice to have. And I'm concerned, and I raised, and I used some phrases, such as, "I would be concerned that they would continue negotiations with not quite so much of a heavy hand as, as has been evidenced before." And I was just speaking as a public citizen at that time, saying that, you know, that negotiations are supposed to be negotiations. And, and I called him on a couple of other issues. But the comment back was that they are still open to negotiation, and I think that was the, that was the key phrase that I was looking for. So, they seem to be open to negotiations, and whatever that means, I'm hoping for the best. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that I have brought those two subjects to the county tonight.
Great. Thank you.
I would say that we've gotten correspondence that indicated that they wish to continue a dialogue with us, and we wish to continue a dialogue with them.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's the end of the, I believe, yes, that's the end of the Citizens' comments. Now, coming to the point, we're, we're going to adopt the agenda, and I think there's a couple of items. Commission Presidents.
I would like to add to the agenda the discussion item for the grant, supporting the grant for the End of the Oregon Trail or to the visitor center.
And I presume this would go under general business then?
Yes. Seven, seven C.
Okay. Which means that we ought to make a recommendation here, an adoption of the agenda for also, and an adoption agreement for the, there's an option, not an adoption, excuse me, an option agreement for purchase of 1743 Washington Street. That's not on the agenda, and I think it's agreeable to all the Commissioners that be included as well.
Just seven D.
So any, any, any discussion other than getting them on the agenda? We will adopt those, the changes on the agenda then. And then we'll move into general business. We have a second reading coming before us. You might want to reintroduce it again, so. Our city manager or our city attorney?
Sure. Let me get the document up here. This is a, an ordinance, this is a second reading. We had the first reading at the last meeting. It involves an amendment to the, to the city's business licensing code that would ensure that all, all business licenses are, businesses that are licensed under our business license code comply with all state, federal, and, and local laws. It was driven in part by a, a entity that wanted to propose a marijuana, let's see, what was it? A marijuana club in Oregon City. And so this is to make sure our code is, is able to handle those applications when they, if they come in again.
And this would be for people that actually had medical marijuana that is legal, under state, but not under the federal government.
That's correct. And so this is to make sure our code is, is able to handle those applications when they, if they come in again.
And this would be for people that actually had medical marijuana that is legal, under state, but not under the federal government.
That's correct.
Thank you. I do, I do see we've got a couple of people here to speak to it, and so we'll take some public comment first.
Sure.
Mr. Kevin Hunt and James Hamilton, would you come forward, please?
Happy New Year to the mayor and commission, city attorney, police chief, and staff. As you know, I testified about this at your last meeting, and I, in appealing simply to issues of fundamental fairness, I failed to persuade a majority of you that this was a terrible idea. So now I'm going to play my other role, which is, as an attorney, I'm going to point out to you that this is a very, very poorly written ordinance. I'm going to point out some of the flaws to you. Or in ordinance, proposed ordinance 11-1013, section 1, 5.04.080, examination of business premises. Paragraph A, it refers to requirement of reasonable access to inspect for, to investigate, and there's, there's some problems with the way this is worded. Quote, "Reasonable access to inspect a business for purely administrative compliance purposes is generally permissible, but the more serious the focus of your investigation, the greater are the constitutional protections." And what you have, what you have before you is something that would purport to empower the, the city manager through five, four or five other unelected and publicly unaccountable officials, including the chief of police, to quote, unquote, "at any time, and at all reasonable times," which is, there's a, there's an oxymoronic conflict. But in any event, to allow any of those people to quote, unquote, "investigate a business" for the purposes determining, among other things, whether it might, at some unspecified point in the future, violate the law. The problem you have here is that when you, when you, the term investigation is undefined, but when you're referring to reasonable times, this implies that it's a right of access. If you are going to give the chief of police or anybody else in your local government the right of access at quote-unquote "any time" without requiring a warrant and probable cause in order to investigate for possible violations of criminal law, you are purporting to violate Article I, Section 9 of the Oregon Constitution and the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution. Something I don't think you want to do, and I was amazed that that wasn't addressed by some memorandum from the city attorney. I was more than amazed. I was shocked. I was shocked that you would have an ordinance in front of you that would purport to allow for something like this. Entry without a warrant or probable cause to investigate whether current or future violations of federal law are going, are going to occur. This is dead on arrival if I or some other attorney files a declaratory judgment action, in my opinion. Secondly, 5.04.080B, this purports to provide for a hearing before the code hearings officer in the event that the city manager determines that, for reasons that it might be a nuisance or might, at some unspecified point in the future, become a nuisance, or might at some unspecified point in the future violate some law at some level of government, from city all the way to federal. This purports to provide a hearing in the case the city manager decides that a business license should be revoked. This provision of a hearing is entirely illusory. If you don't believe that, let me point out to you 5.04.090. This limits the scope of review the hearings officer would have. The hearings officer would be required to uphold the decision of the city manager. May I have more time to complete my presentation?
That's up to the commission, he's actually pointing out issues that he has in the ordinance itself. I have no particular problem with that.
I have no problem with it either.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that very much. The scope of the hearings officer's review is to whether quote-unquote "substantial evidence" would support the city manager's decision. Now, in the law, substantial evidence doesn't mean a preponderance of the evidence, it doesn't mean that, that it's the persuasive evidence. It just simply is more than a scintilla, but not much more than a scintilla. A mere scintilla of evidence would not be enough, but more, a little more than a scintilla is enough. That's what substantial evidence means in appeals. That's what, I'm an appellate lawyer, that's what it means. There's no de novo review here. It's simply, the hearings officer, although it talks about what evidence would be admissible, I'm not sure what the point of that evidence would be, given the, the limitation this places on the scope of review. So this is an entirely illusory hearing. Once, and, and for all practical purposes, because the, the term review for quote-unquote correctness and for substantial evidence, the term correct isn't defined. Is it legally correct? Does it mean factually correct? By what standard? By whose standard? By what criteria? It's entirely left out. Entirely left out. The, section 5.04.0902 explains the consequences of this commission not asserting jurisdiction to call up a hearings officer's decision for its own review. But it does not explain what effect your failure to call it up would have on a hearings officer's decision not to uphold revocation of business license.
What was that number again? I'm sorry.
Now, turning to 5.04.090B, it says the commission may choose to assert jurisdiction. There's no enumeration of how this occurs, or if, whether there's any basis, criteria that would call for it. It's entirely discretionary, apparently would be entirely arbitrary, and there's no provision for any affected business licensee to petition you for such a review. What that means is that the same opportunity to have you pass, pass on these decisions is not afforded to all business licensees who are affected by this ordinance. Rather, it would be up to, up to the commission to decide whether it felt any particular situation warranted its, its review. In my opinion, this is in violation of Article I, Section 20 of the Oregon Constitution, which guarantees equality of privileges and immunities to all citizens of this state. In looking at this, it's my conclusion that at a time when this city is trying to encourage businesses to open in, in Oregon City, I, I for one, I don't think that any prudent businessperson would open shop under this kind of a regime. This, this is a regime under which someone could be issued a business license at a later time, based on the opinion of one unelected, publicly unaccountable official, have his license set, set for revocation, not have a full, a full scope of review in, in an appeal, and then not have any right to have you pass upon that. Now, why is I, as a businessperson, why would I take the risk of opening a business in, in your city under such circumstances if what I was doing was lawful, when I could just go down the road to another city that had a normal business license ordinance? The concept that this, there's an emergency that requires you to adopt this right away is absurd and ridiculous. I know it's, I know it's second reading, but this should be sent back to the drawing board and have these problems fixed. With regard to the Oregon Sky Foundation having been issued a business license, as I indicated last time, if there's, if there's a problem, and, and I told you before, I personally don't really want to dispense around Main Street either, but it's a real simple problem to fix. The U.S. Attorney for the State of Oregon has issued a memorandum to the Attorney General of the State of Oregon indicating that the, that the United States government will prosecute, will prosecute, not might, will prosecute any entity that dispenses marijuana in the state of Oregon regardless of Oregon state law. That is a matter of record. And so it would, all Chief Connerd has to do is pick up the phone and call the United States Attorney. If this outfit goes into business and he believes it's violating federal law, and when the U.S. Attorney's Office investigates that, they will shut it down in a heartbeat, they will confiscate all the assets and all the equipment, and they will put these people in jail. If that's what you want, that's how you accomplish it the right way, not by passing an overbroad and vague ordinance that takes the rights away of all other business licensees in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get?
I would suggest while, yeah, I was going to suggest while you're here, to go ahead and let our city attorney respond to them.
Sure, Mayor Neely, in mission, I'm not certain I got the, the notes on all of the various suggestions, and, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced that we'd be best served by having a debate here about what is and isn't the right thing. I do think that several of those concerns are, don't quite go as far as Mr. Hunt explained for a variety of different reasons. I guess one thing to keep in mind, most of what he identified is really actually in the existing code and hasn't been changed. There was some clarification of a variety of different things, some, there was additional process put into the, into the appellate process, but in terms of access to, to places of business at reasonable times, that's been in the code, and that is, in fact, something that, that is allowable under the Constitution. You've got to remember, this, this ordinance doesn't provide for criminal sanctions. This is not a criminal ordinance, it is an administrative one. And so, you know, there are different levels of, of things that are going on here. But essentially, the, I don't believe the access provides for a constitutional issue. In terms of, let's talk about, you know, maybe the, the hearing, you know, the, Mr. Hunt indicated that the code, you know, there's a provision, if the code hearings officer determines by the city's manager's decision is correct, that actually governed by the standard review that's set forth, and it's 5.04.090A1. And A says that the code hearings officer shall review the city's manager's decision for errors of law. So there is a standard in there, it's just in, in the provision immediately above that. In terms of whether or not there is a, a right to, the, the idea that the commission can call up a decision, the default position of this ordinance is that the hearings officer makes a decision, the commission has the ability to call up at its discretion if it wants to review a, a decision. Mr. Hunt suggested that that violated Article I, Section 20, privileges and immunities. In order to have violation of that clause, you've got to have a certain class of individuals, similarly situated individuals who have a right, and that same right is denied to others, because there is nobody similarly situated, except for the city commission. There is no violation of privileges and immunities clause. Let's see. I think I got most of them, but I'm happy, you know, I, I do think the, the ordinance is, is, I didn't hear any issues with the ordinance that I, that made the light bulb go off and suddenly say, oh my God, we've got to rewrite this. If you want a more detailed response, we're happy to, to get that to you, but I, I didn't hear anything that makes me, would make me recommend to you that you hold off for another meeting.
May I have 30, 30 seconds to, to respond to that?
30 seconds.
Because I, I, I don't, I know Mr. Viceman's a very excellent municipal lawyer. I, of course, for almost 30 years have practiced nothing but constitutional law and criminal law. And, and I will tell you that it's, that, that what he told you about, Article I, Section 20, is not correct. Article I, Section 20 is not interpreted the same way as the federal equal protection clause. It's interpreted differently, and it does, there does not have to be a class of, of persons. Article I, Section 20 applies both to individuals, and it applies to classes. And that is the law, that is the law, and that has been the law for quite some time in the state of Oregon. Secondly, the issue is that whether this is called an administrative ordinance, its label isn't going to control. If you empower the chief of police or anybody else to conduct at any time an investigation into whether criminal laws are being broken, you must comply with Article I, Section 9 of the Oregon Constitution. That's the law. So, so free to test this, but I suggest that, that this is a rush into, a rush for no reason, and that it's simply going to eventually result in lots of businesses opening here and in, in potential liability to the city. And there was a, there was a third point I wished to rebut, and I can't recall what it was. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this issue.
Thank you.
One quick response, and I, I don't doubt Mr. Hunt's years of experience in constitutional and criminal law. I do agree with him that the equal protection and Article I, Section 20 are very different. If you remember, Lynda Lord was a resident who brought up a number of cases here, and we had a very thorough discussion of the privileges and immunities clause in, in those cases. As, as, I also agree with Mr. Hunt that there, that it's not about whether it's termed an administrative ordinance or a criminal ordinance, the question's really about what it, what the implications of it are. Are there criminal penalties? It has a significant role to play. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
It's come to my attention that the municipal corporation known as Oregon City has engaged through various devices and contrivances in the practice of directly controlling the business activities engaged in by individuals. Is made clear in the plain language of the propounded statutes, ordinance, and regulations that you mean to convert the rights of the people into privileges, they must receive permission to exercise. Simply put, this is repugnant to the concepts of free markets, free enterprise, liberty, and individual rights that were set forth to be secured by the Constitution and the Oregon Constitution, which are purported to respectfully be the supreme law of the land. It is not my intention to cause abrasion with the government, rather it's clearly the government's intention to bury the people. Thus, in the interest of peaceably noticing and reminding those in office who would undercut all their law, attempt to abrogate infringe or otherwise diminish my rights and those of the other people of Oregon, I hereby notice you the following truth of law. I'm one of the people of Oregon who's contemplated an original constitution submitted to Congress for admittance into the Union. And as such, I claim and reserve my secured, unalienable, natural, and substantial rights to contract at arm's length with another, to engage in the business trade or another method of pursuing an honest livelihood that I choose to fit, and to do so, free of government embrace of any kind. I claim and possess all rights to hold myself out to other people as one who buys, sells, or performs services for contracts, specifically in this case that's being mentioned. Any encumbrance bestowed to me in the exercise of such rights or others caused in any way by anyone, including government officials, in any capacity as a trespass and injury on me and any other party in Oregon City. The argument and authorities of this constitutional law of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof in all treaties made, or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby. Anything in the constitution or laws of any state, to the contrary notwithstanding, the Constitution secures the lives, liberties, and properties of the people against unlawful government encroachment. I claim and possess that right. I'm going to bypass this stuff for, because of time. But further, no claim police powers, eminent domain, or other excuse or justification may be used, because even if those alleged powers exist, they only exist within strict constitutional limitations as interpreted by the people. The enumeration in Congress of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disperse any others retained by the people. My above-mentioned rights are secured even though they may not be clearly expressed in the Constitution. We declare that all men, when they form a social compact, are equal in right, that all men, all powers inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness, we should have to remember that. And they have at all times the right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they may think proper. That could happen. The people of Oregon are the sovereign authorities of Oregon. Further, they are equal in rights, thus by converting any rights into a privilege for a select few, whoever they may be, and for any reason causes certain people to have more rights than others in effect. No law shall violate the right of the people to be secure in their person's houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable search or seizure. No warrant shall be issued but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and person or thing to be seized. That's Article I, Section 9, that John was mentioning. I am unlawfully engaged in the conduct of my, of business choosing of my own. Where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking of legislation which would abrogate them. Miranda versus Arizona. There can be no sanction or penalty imposed upon one because of this exercise of constitutional rights. Shearer versus Colon, 481, if, 946. The claim and exercise of a constitutional right cannot be converted into a crime. That's what you're trying to do here. The laws for the punishment of crimes shall be founded on these principles, protection of society, personal responsibility, accountability for one's actions, and reformation. See Section 15 of the Oregon Constitution. The original Constitution of 1859 stated in this section that laws for the punishment of crimes shall be founded on the principles of reformation and not vindictive justice.
How much more time do you need?
That's about it. Conclusion, if I can. Although not thorough and complete, this brief demonstrates substantiation for the claim that it is my right and the people's right of Oregon City to conduct private dealings with each other. And you have to deal with jurisdiction. And when jurisdiction is challenged, the burden of proof is on the government. You're being challenged for your jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Tom O'Brien.
Oh, Tom O'Brien, thank you. Please come forward.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to bring a little matter to your attention. It's pertinent to this discussion, as well as every discussion that I have attended in many months of meetings here. On page three of tonight's agenda, it says, "Each speaker is given three minutes to speak." I would plead with you. There are other people in this room who've come here to speak to particular issues that are on tonight's agenda. Would you hold people to that three-minute requirement? Please? Thank you.
Thank you.
And where's the commission? I would point out, for some reason, lights were not going on in the previous Mr. Hamilton's presentation, so he wasn't getting alerted.
I guess I would ask staff, I'm not an attorney, so I definitely am interested in the, in the questions that were brought up, and I feel that some of them were answered, but I'm not sure that all of them were answered because they all came at us at the same time. So, I, I don't know, you know, I'd kind of feel okay with getting those answers before making a decision, but I don't know what our timeline is, and I don't know if it's something that we can, you know, look back at the tape and kind of refer back to those questions and get an answer for the next meeting, or if we, if, anyway, I'm, I'm not sure that I have all the answers for those questions that I've just have been asked.
Commissioner Smith and, and commission, as I said when I started mine, I didn't hear anything, you know, as I was going through it, that made me jump up and say, "Wait a second, there's a problem here." I feel relatively comfortable that there, there isn't an issue. If we want to make, make sure that we got all of the allegations and respond to them, you know, we, we can certainly do that. But I don't, I don't think we, I, I don't think I'd recommend that we have, that the commission has to do that at this time. But, you know, it's ultimately how you, you know, whether you feel comfortable with it. I don't know if Chief Conrad has any.
What does the rest of the commission think?
Okay, I would like to say, I, I certainly don't want to let anyone think that I would want a marijuana club here in Oregon City, but I see far too many loopholes in this ordinance. And it, there's something in it that just strikes me as a violation of my constitutional rights. And I'm certainly not a constitutional expert, but in my limited understanding of that document, there's something in there that strikes me that way. And I think we need to take a, a much deeper look at the original ordinance to avoid accelerating ourselves down a slippery slope that we don't want to go down.
So, it's the commission.
Is there a timeframe that needs to be addressed here? Why would there be?
Well, it was presented to us as an emergency the last time around, so I think we have
Chief Conrad, do you have any thoughts on?
Other than wanting this ordinance passed.
I got a lot of thoughts, and I'm glad Mr. Hunt finds that I'm unaccountable, because it's sometimes.
Yeah, I was surprised at me.
To a wide variety of people. You know, originally, as the commission knows, we, we brought this to them, amending the prior ordinance, and it was very simple amendment to an ordinance that has stood the test of time for a long time. The only thing we changed was making sure that all businesses that were issued license had to comply with federal law.
Yeah.
Essentially, that's the only change we made to, to an ordinance in which we have issued business licenses for years in the city. The only change we're making is they have to comply with federal law. And there was another slight provision in there that said that the, the city commission can call up a business decision, a business license decision they want to review. And if the commission remembers, we had a, had a company here that was selling tobacco products to minors.
Yeah.
And we received numerous complaints about that business. The police department investigated it. We actually brought the business owners down here.
Yeah.
And at the time the business owners came down here and pleaded to keep their license, the police department became an advocate of that business because they had enacted so many of those changes that we wanted them to make. And since that time, we've monitored those changes they made. And this, and the system has worked really, really well for us. The system also worked well when the Oregon Sky Foundation came in here. We denied the business license. They appealed it. They appealed it to the hearings officer who upheld their appeal. It worked for them in that case. It wasn't the decision I wanted, but it worked for them. So, our decision then was how do we make sure that we don't want some of these businesses coming to town? And that's where this amendment came into play. How do we, how do we ensure that these type of businesses, which, if the commission remembers, last time I came in here, we, we talked at length about the increase in crime that had happened in the Los Angeles areas, including homicides that had happened when those types of businesses came to town. And I'd also like to remind the commission, I, I think most, most of the commissioners here at the time, when, about a year, a year and a half ago, we had a twelve-year-old girl come to this commission, and she was recognized by the commission.
Yeah.
And she is recognized by the commission because she lived at home in a house that grew medical marijuana. And there's three people that came down from the Tacoma area, and they put her at gunpoint and her two little brothers at gunpoint in a closet while they robbed her father of the medical marijuana. And those three people have been convicted now and are in prison. One of those people admitted that their intent was to kill that father when they came down to, to rob that place of the medical marijuana. And the only reason they did it was because of those kids. We also had another medical marijuana grow that was robbed at gunpoint from a person who came from Idaho, and tied two people up, put them in the closet, and robbed them of their marijuana at gunpoint. So, this, this has, has a, a huge effect on the safety of our community. And, and I don't have the statistics here with me right now, but there was a 200%, I believe, increase in car thefts, assaults, robberies, homicides, and places like that that go in our community. And, and like I said before, I think this is a very slight change in, in a business license ordinance that has worked very, very well for the city, and, and all it does is, is asking the commission to approve an amendment that requires those licenses to comply with federal law.
Commissioner, I might add one thing to the chief's comments, and that is that, you know, that there's some irony here in that some of the citizens, one of the citizens in particular argued that the ordinance is vague and arbitrary. And, and I think that argument would have been more compelling on the, on the former ordinance, because it allowed this conflict between the federal law and what the city code said to permeate and get to the point that it is now. And I'm a fan of making sure that our ordinances are as consistent as possible with federal law, so, to some, to a large extent, because I don't want businesses who might want to operate like that one, who may want it to come to Oregon City and sell marijuana, to think, to make an investment upfront in property or acquire equipment, or otherwise, take their time and our staff time, pursuing that objective when, just because the ordinance isn't clear. And I think it's always best to try to make the ordinance as clear as possible, so that if a business like that is contemplating coming here, at least they know what the law is and isn't. And it, it isn't a loophole that invites confusion. It's actually closing a loophole so that there isn't confusion. And I think that's, I think that's always a good thing.
You're not, you're not up here testifying at this point, sir. The will of the commission? Mayor cannot make a motion?
I still don't understand the, the need for rushing this through. And, and given the, I see Chief Conrad's arguments, you know, are very convincing arguments. However, it still does not feel right to me. And also, it, it, it just feels like we need to take more time. And the, the argument that our ordinance has stood the test of time, we can look at our process here for replacing our city commissioner. It stood the test of time, and it doesn't work. We don't have a process. So, I, I don't buy the arguments, these, these ordinances have always stood the test of time, and, and they're, they're good as they are. We need to continually look at these ordinances and bring things up to date to what we're dealing with nowadays.
I guess I don't have an argument with that, but I would say that, you know, we can always be legally challenged, I think, on anything. And that's the way laws evolve. I mean, if in fact, a claim is made and the court's ruled that something in our ordinance is, is unconstitutional, then we have to change our ordinance. They, I mean, those things evolve over time. And, and I imagine we could look at this time and time again, and we could have other people coming up and finding something that they felt infringed on individual rights and so forth. I mean, we can, we can, we can look at it. If there's some language improvements that could be made, we can make them. My concern is that we don't take a lot of time to do that. And if there's a motion to continue this, I would say the motion should be only until the next commission meeting.
I would agree with that.
Yes, yeah.
And that's not a motion I'd, I'd want to make, but if there is a motion coming forward that way, then it can be put forward.
I would move that we continue this until the next meeting and, and get some of our questions answered.
I'll hear a second.
Mayor, before we, she said, "Get some of our questions answered."
Our, our questions answered regarding the specific points that we're giving to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll hear a second.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, with that, we're going on, I believe, to item number.
Do we need to have the grant people come back after?
Well, wait a minute, we gotta.
It's been placed on.
It's been placed on the agenda. It's a specific, I think we have 7B to go first.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, and that's 7, that's 7C, so. 7B, and that is intergovernmental agreement with Metro Enhancement Agreement Number 93010035. And.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have good news. This should take less than three minutes.
Can you put the timer on?
What we have before you is the IGA with Metro, which we've had since about 1988. And what it is, we got 50 cents for every ton of garbage that goes through the recycling or the, through the transfer station. And there are three, three stations in Portland. One they call Central Station was in Portland, and there's one in Forest Grove, and there's us. And we've all been receiving 50 cents a ton since 1988, and it hasn't gone up a penny. And so, normally, these agreements are for five years. We, we requested just to do two years so we could pursue the, the possibility of having the, the rate increased. If it had been, just kept up with CPI, the rate would be 91 cents, which would be about 95,000 more a year than what we're receiving. But I know there's going to be a lot of resistance. We've always had resistance from Metro when we've done this. We've already got some, and we haven't even said much yet. Anyway, for this agreement, it is for, for two years instead of five years. And the revenue is, goes mostly to fund the Metro Enhancement Grants around town. The revenue in 1992, 93 was a high of 236,000 and has come down almost every year over the last 20 years to where it's about 120,000 now. And that's basically because of recycling.
Recycling, yeah.
So, the agreement has been passed around our organization, their organization, that's why. They have already signed it, and they already have put a number on it, because they're, they're presenting us with the IG, we're IGAs. They're sort of the drivers.
Nice.
So, are there any other questions?
Well, to make certain is, we're sold the 50 cent per ton, but it's for a two-year period, which could be, can renegotiate it in, in another two years. Is that my?
Correct. But we also put the words in here if we get, if it goes up to some other thing. We don't have to immediately redo the IGA. It's still good for two years regardless of what the rate is.
Is this $95,000, generate approximately $95,000 more each year? Is that taking into account a continuous slide of tonnage?
No, it's been, it's been pretty much leveled off around 120 or so. So, it's just, that's just what, if we, right, right now, one year would, increasing from 50 to 91 cents, would it be 95,000 more than what we have been receiving? So, it'd be about 200, back up to 200,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I hear a motion or a discussion.
I move to approve the IGA with Metro Number 931035.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
It didn't take any time at all. The clock's still.
We're bringing in 7C. This will be the, the End of the Oregon Trail Grant Support Decision. Is, we have that listed first of the two items that we've added. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So.
I put it on the agenda mainly to ask a couple of questions, or at least.
Mr. Power, you want to come forward if you want to at this point, just in case we had questions of you?
I don't think it was here to talk about it. We can't find out.
Well, Gail's here, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, I did, I'm the representative to the Oregon City Tourism Council, and so it's part of the reason I, I chatted with Gail and Dan before this grant was, well, before they wanted to, before they made a presentation to the city about it, to discuss the timeline and, and all of that. And so, we have not started our goals process for the year. So, my recommendation was for CHP to bring this to us tonight, and, and then add it as an agenda item, so that we could at least discuss it as a commission to decide whether or not we wanted to support this grant request. And so, that's why it's, that's why they made the presentation tonight. I was giving them my viewpoint, my viewpoint in terms of the, the process that we've gone through to, to kind of build the Tourism Council and all the other past with the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Site and where we're sitting as a city in terms of our goals, that there might be concerns about supporting this grant unless we answered a couple of key questions. And so, that's really why I wanted to have a discussion time to discuss that. My position is that the city should support this grant, but there's some, there's some attachments to that. We have not had a discussion at a city commission level about what our complete future plans are for the End of the Oregon Trail site. That's been kind of put lower down on our priority list at this point. However, even though the future of the End of the Oregon Trail site, and even the management of that site, has not been determined by this commission, we do acknowledge CHP's running of the Visitor Center. They have a commitment to that, an agreement to do that. And they are performing not just visitor services there, but educational programming. I told them that the glitch in terms of the city probably supporting a grant was that the grant probably couldn't be tied to expanding into the Interpretive Center Building, or an opening of the Interpretive Center Building, or a management of the Interpretive Center Building. But that, the grant really should be specified to go along with the programming that they're already doing, perhaps expand that to some degree. Expansion of that programming that they're offering may or may not just stay with the confines of the Visitor Center. I think if the expansion, if the expansion of their programming goes beyond the Visitor Center site onto the property, or even into the Interpretive Center Building, I think to some degree, that's a staff decision. But the future management of the building, we haven't got to yet.
You're right.
And so, I think any support of this grant has to be minus the questions of the future of that building, the Interpretive Center Building, and minus any discussions about what the current plan is for management of that building, or the future management of the building. So, that, I think, needs, I, I figured that that's something that the commission could agree on. I don't know. So, that's one of the questions that I, that's one of the questions I wanted to address. The second question is, we've already, as a commission, given staff the go-ahead to allow CHP to at least utilize the Interpretive Center Building for special group tours that are coming into the city. One, because we as a city don't want to turn away visitors that are angry that the museum's open, and there's people there that can let them see part of that building if we can. So, we have basically, as a commission, acknowledged the fact that that building, that if there's specific dates where specific groups are coming into Oregon City, that CHP can have access to that building. I'm still okay with that.
Yeah.
But if that expands, which it could expand with this grant, I think that then, in that case, there has to be a payback. case, there has to be a payback in some way to the city. There needs to be, because if they're expanding their services beyond the center and that's allowing visitors to go under a building, we may have concerns about lighting and heating and all those things, which Scott and staff has, you know, probably already considered. So there has to be, if there's an expansion of that, there has to be a direct tie to us supporting that extension. And in my opinion, the reference being made to some of the specific needs of the interpretive center building, some of which have been mentioned, some of which probably haven't been mentioned, and I'm sure there's a whole list of items that need to be addressed at the End of the Oregon Trail interpretive center site. Cleaning is probably one of them, but not the extent. So, you know, I don't think it's the commission's, I don't think it's our position to say what those items are. I don't think it's, I don't even think it's our position to go through your grant request with a fine-tooth comb and say each of these things, but, or, you know, to question what your organization is asking for a grant. However, if we, as a commission, support your grant request, I think we can ask that one thing is specifically laid out in that grant. And that should specifically tie to whether or not the grant allows you to go into the building more. If it does, then there needs to be some discussion before that grant is submitted on the 14th between staff and CHP about if there is some sort of contribution after the grant is awarded, how or what can come back to the city to help get that facility to deal with some of the maintenance issues of the building. I don't know what the main thing is. I know there's cleaning. I know there's issues possibly with the roof. I know there's some dry rot issues. I know there's all these other things. But I think if, if a quick discussion when Scott gets back, hopefully, I think he's back before, okay, so he'll be back before you have to make this request, but that staff says these are the absolute most important needs that this building has. And maybe it's $10,000, maybe it's $20,000 of the grant or whatever, but I think that that piece needs to specifically be in the grant and as a partnership, basically, for us to support it. That's my, that's really the only, that's one of my main things on it. So I, the, I'll probably make a motion in a second, but I wrote a list to make sure. So that the CHP works with the staff to decide what the building needs are. That staff see the grant before it goes, all right, to make sure specifically that there is a budgetary item in there that says this amount. It probably, maybe it doesn't even need to say specifically, but this amount of money of the grant's gonna go to maintenance or to, to long, whatever. So that staff needs to see that, that the grant needs to specify the dollar amount and what the repairs might be. And I guess there could be a list of that, but that the access to the End of the Oregon Trail building, or at least the extended, expanded access to that building, is contingent on the fact that, that that money or that those maintenance issues are dealt with, that it's very specific that before we allow extended access into that building, that those issues are dealt with, that part of the grant is dealt with. And that, again, the support of this grant does not in any way give any impression to anyone about what the city commission's viewpoint is on what the future of that building is, nor should it imply any future management questions of that building. I think it's completely a separate thing. We haven't got to that yet. So with those, with those, I guess I'll give some time for discussion on that, and then I'll probably make a motion to some of that degree, which I'll probably have to mention all that again in a motion. But anyway, those were my concerns. That's those things that I wanted CHP to know, and I felt that that's probably the some questions that most of the commissioners would have, and maybe you have more. I'm not sure.
No, I think you're, you're pretty, you've pretty well covered it. I do think it's good to have it all spelled out and made very clear on the grant.
Right. No, I think your comments are reasonable. I would suggest that you could conclude in the motion, a commission liaison with staff to, you know, make sure that your concerns are made, and I would suggest that you would be there.
I may not make that motion. Someone else could make it.
May I respond?
Yeah.
I totally agree with what you're saying, and really, it's the thrust that we took in approaching this, knowing that there were repairs and maintenance needs, knowing that those things had to take place. And I'm fully supportive of not getting into the management question right now. I think that's appropriate. And we can, we can hope that there is some success so that we can be a partner with the city on, on those type of things. I think it is appropriate that there be, that those be done. And so we're hopeful that we can, can be successful in helping those repairs and maintenance issues, and then really expand the use, still with permission, still under guidance of staff, you know, the way that we've been, we've been operating. So we can be hopeful, and I think those people that come to visit and children and the public will be served. And it's really trying to be thoughtful of the future. We know groups are coming, and I think this is a good step, a good safe step that could allow, allow for those things to happen.
The last thing I guess I would say with this is, I think part of, I think part of the confusion of what CHP should do with this grant is based on partly the staff's confusion about what our ultimate goals are for that building, which we don't know yet. And so I wanted to at least answer some basic questions with the commission, get some head nods, so staff knows that there's a couple of things that the commission has at least agreed on, right? I mean, right now, the commission has pretty much stated that there's okay to have some access to the building. I think we've also, as a commission, for the most part, at least two of us have, are really committed to seeing the interpretive center be utilized for the 2013...
Yes.
Oregon California Trails Association thing. Excuse me, I shouldn't say "thing," conference, I think. Probably more appropriate. And I guess what I think putting our blessing on this grant is gonna help us with is, we want to see that building get utilized. We don't know what's gonna happen with it, as I said. We don't have a budget set aside to do that. And if we are expecting to make a commitment to have that building semi-useable for visitors in any way for a conference, it needs to look better than it does now. And this might be the ability for us to tackle a little teeny bit of that prior to 2013, because right now, beyond 2013, we have no idea what's going on with that building. In fact, you know, so I think that at least gets us on at least a plan to get to that point.
So is that your motion?
No, my motion is... I'm gonna put these in the motion, gonna make sure. All right, so the motion is that I move to support CHP's grant to the Lennox Foundation. As long as CHP works with staff to determine possible maintenance or repairs to the building, that can be and will be included in the grant. And that an expansion of the End of, or, excuse me, that an expansion of CHP's operations into the interpretive center be based on, be connected to that grant, oh, that the expansion of their offerings into our building is contingent on those repairs and that grant, that, that grant item being...
Successful.
Successful, okay.
Awarded.
All right. And that this does not in any way make a judgment on what the future of that building is, nor does it imply any question about the future management of that building.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. I'll second. You got that motion, Nancy.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Sorry, Nancy.
We gotta make sure we...
You got that?
Oh.
Do we have to? Wait, we lost it.
Taking off the tape.
Can we add to the motion?
I have it written down here, Nancy.
He didn't want to do it. I wanted to make a friendly amendment that, that Commissioner President Smith act as liaison with staff in this effort. Is that friendly? Will you accept that amendment?
I guess.
I will.
Second?
Yes.
Just because it's friendly.
We like to be friendly.
All right.
Any other discussion?
That was a good job.
Oh, thank you.
You did a great job.
That will go ahead and do the roll call, please.
All right. Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
The additional, added amendment here, I mean, amendment, the added, added item here is the extension of Historic Properties Option Agreement for purchase of the 1743 Washington Street property. Just to make a quick summary, an option agreement was entered into by the Urban Renewal Agency Commission, and it turned out that Urban Renewal Agency did not own that property, the city did. And we have that option that was approved, and the item here is to extend that option to, what is the date, sir, on that?
February 14th.
February 16th.
February 16th.
That's right, February 16th. That's right. We extended it to an additional day, February 16th.
Two days. That's two days.
Huh?
Fourteenth to sixteenth?
Two days.
No. It should be the sixteenth.
That's okay. He's probably making a comment being a statistician, but statisticians like variable numbers. They don't like constant numbers. So that's all right, too. Anyway, and that brief introduction into it, it's really an extension of option that shouldn't have existed but did, and the city commission is being presented with this item to... Now, does the city manager want to add to that in any fashion?
No, sir.
And the motion is written out for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move to consent...
And it is February 16th, Commissioners?
Yeah, I got it.
He corrected me.
I understand.
Yeah. She wanted the 15?
I had it.
It said the fourteenth.
The sixteenth in one place and the fourteenth in another. Sixteenth.
I got it. I got it. All right. I move to consent to a further 32-day extension of, of the closing date under the option agreement to February 16th, 2012. In doing so, the city commission notes the following. A, the city is not a party to the option agreement and is not obligated to sell the subject property. And B, in order to expedite matters, Historic Properties has stated that the city commission consent will be acceptable even though its option agreement is with the Oregon City Urban Renewal Agency. This consent is provided as a courtesy to allow discussions among the affected parties in an effort to resolve matters in a dispute, in this dispute. The city reserves all its rights and assertions and waives none of its rights or assertions as to issues arising with respect to the option agreement.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Passes.
Is there any request for a break, or should we continue? For my side, I agree we can continue.
Yep, let's go.
Okay. We got discussion items, appointment application process for city commission vacancy. Nancy I will take the lead on this. We do, I believe, have some...
Comments.
Yeah. We'll have city assistant comments, but I would like Nancy I to go ahead and speak to this before we go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. The commission asked to discuss the application and the appointment process to fill a vacancy on the city commission. The process is generally described in the city charter under section 32, Filling Vacancies, where it says, "The vacant elective offices in the city shall be filled by appointment. A majority vote of the commission shall be required to validate the appointment. The appointee's term of office shall begin immediately upon appointment and shall continue until the next general election and until a successor is duly elected and qualified to complete the unexpired or new term of office as applicable." On your screens in front of you are several items that will assist you in working through the process. We have used this same system in the past, and it has been successful. There's a timeline there that will, that also discusses some advertising. There's an application that you can review and make changes to. There is, you had also requested some discussion on a background check form, and then also there's a selection of interview questions, which you also said you'd like to review before interviewing applicants. So we can take these one at a time if you wish, or however you'd like to make that decision.
We're talking about the advertisement of the open positions. We might want to take these in order. I don't know how you want to proceed.
Sure. Yeah.
The timeline is rather short. However, we're filling a position that if, when we make the form, there'll be only about 10 months left in that, in that...
If we make it that quick.
Well, I'm sure we'll come to a decision. Is the timeline okay for everybody?
It's okay with me.
Okay, the deadline, February 3rd. Any problems there?
Uh-uh.
Now, we, we have, we have a application document, I believe, on our document sheet, right?
Yes.
Incidentally, I do have somebody that wishes to speak to this, but why don't we go through this, and we'll open it to anybody in the public that wants to, to speak to the item. The, is that, does that, is there, are there any issues with the application that we see? It's sort of a general application, it's specific, but we, it's kind of the kind, the same kind of form, not identical, but the same kind of form we have for various boards and so forth and application procedures. I am gonna make a comment if I might. We have online applications, which oftentimes come in the form of emails that respond to the questions. They're very difficult to read, the format of the emails. It's not...
Yeah, it's just in text format.
I know that.
Yeah.
But do we have the capabilities of online filling out of this application and submitting?
We do. In fact, the application is just ready to launch as soon as we get the okay on it.
And you can fill in directly into the application form?
Yes, right. Just like on, if you go to the boards and commissions page and you want to apply for a board or commission, it's the same, same process. What we can do to make it easier to read is, when, when they come in, we can go in and format a little and make it just easier for it to read.
I've seen a lot of these forms in terms of the appointments that I've been involved in, and they're very, very difficult to read. So if you, if you can do formatting, if people do it on just an email response piece, that it'd help us, I think, look at it. Are there any, are there any additions or deletions or comments you have on the applications at this point?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Neely, I might point out one, one thing in the commission form. There's a request for criminal background check, but it's, it's optional. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna second-guess something here. This is probably something that's a little bit more, more contentious than anything else. The city manager has the authority, when people actually choose to run for a position, the city manager has the choice, has authority that he can take or not take to run criminal background checks on people that are running for the elected office on the commission. I think he's never opted to do that. Am I right?
Actually, it isn't the authority. Basically, there's, there's some case law on this, and essentially, the only, for an elective office, the only qualifications that you can impose are those that are included in the charter. And so that's in section 13, the qualifications of officer. No person shall be eligible for an elective office in the city unless at the time of his election, qualified elector within the meaning of the states constitution resided in the city. So there's not the authority to say, you don't get on the ballot if you don't run a conflict check. It's optional.
I just want to clarify...
I just want to clarify, Mayor, I think what you're focusing on is the city manager's authority to require background checks for appointed positions where people are handling money or have other fiduciary responsibilities or, or access to criminal records, that sort of thing, which we typically do with all of our employees and could do with appointed officials, appointed officials. There was a conflict about this earlier and right after I started here, I think a few weeks after I started and an interpretation of that I think historically had been made that the manager would do those checks and I checked with our attorney, I wasn't really comfortable doing that with regard to elected positions. And so, Mr. Kavizman has opined that it's an optional thing, you can, it's like asking a consent to search, you can give your consent, but we can't require it. And I'm, I don't, I don't think it's my role particularly in the elected positions for me to.
But the distinction is that we're making an appointment and this is not an elected position.
Exactly, that was a distinction I would make, you know, you can't keep him off the ballot, this is information.
I'm going to, if I might, I'm going to break into our review of these points at this time and perhaps go to citizen comments, we have two people. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Hunt and Mr. O'Brien to come forward. In the order I call them.
Thank you.
You can't be polite to the next person.
Thank you very much, well, I would like to respectfully disagree with the notion that there is a distinction with a difference between whether a person is standing on the ballot or is before you on an application to fill an elective office by appointment. I, I don't think that makes any difference. Frankly, according to your ordinance zero-one-ten-thirty-one, I believe it's employment applicants and city volunteers who are subject to background checks. I don't believe that a person applying for the position of city commission is an employment applicant, if he is, you're not paying the minimum wage. The, and you are volunteers, but I don't think that's what you meant by volunteers in that ordinance. Here's some problems here. The application says that this is optional, however, the language on the form itself says forth that all employment applicants, volunteers are required to sign a criminal history background check authorization, authorization form per this ordinance as part of the application process city of Oregon City. So is it optional or not? I reading this would, would conclude it's not optional. You say it's optional, but I would conclude that if I don't fill this out, you're going to reject me. It's also not set forth whether in fact you would reject someone simply because they didn't consent to the background check. I think you need to let them know that right up front. My other concerns are this. No policies or rules have been established regarding the following aspects of this. One, to whom will the criminal records be disclosed? Two, who shall have access to them? Presumably since you're filling a, a public official's position, I would think that someone could make an argument, these are public records. Is that what, is that your intent? You really want that to happen? Number three, how long and by whom are these to be retained? Four, whom, or when if ever are they to be destroyed? As I pointed out last time too, there's, there's another consequence here that I think is really quite unfair. And what that is, is that someone who might apply and be rejected nonetheless has provided their potential opposition in the following election with their personal criminal background. I also have a question for you, why is it relevant what a person's driving status and record is? Suppose someone wants to be a city commissioner and they only ride a bicycle, are they to be penalized? What difference does it make? It doesn't make any difference, I think this is just a simply an overly intrusive thing to be requiring of people. If they want to come to you and say, "I have nothing to hide in and I'm suggesting to you that you run my criminal background check because I'm a wonderful citizen and I want you to know that," let them do that, but I think for you to, I think you would be best off, again, this is an area in which you don't need to tread, I think it's soggy moss. Just because someone tells you you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. And I don't think this is a very good idea. And I appreciate the city attorney's comments, he's, he's absolutely right if, the prior procedures of, for requiring these checks of people running for office, they weren't lost.
It's Thomas sitting right next to you and the light is gone on. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
Tom O'Brien, once again. Since this is an important decision on the part of the commission to appoint someone who is going to be working in the best interest of the city, I would ask you to attempt to consider publicizing it beyond what I saw in tonight's agenda document. I don't know what the cost would be to mail out a letter to the residents of the city, but I think there are a lot of people who have feelings towards this city who for whatever reasons can't show up at your meetings and therefore you don't know them or their capabilities. But I think that this is such an important decision in regards to where the future is headed, that I would like to see you advertise it a little outside the norm. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Let me make one response to the comments of Mr. Hunt. In an election process, there's the opportunity for the press to investigate things, for things to come out throughout a, a different process. This, there is no, you know, we're going to have a bunch of people here, we're going to have these applications and yes, there's election, we do it, but it's, it's not really going to be open to the, the scrutiny of the press. But I think, but I think his point on who's going to see these, how are they going to be retained is a valid one and I think it's something that we should look for, for counsel on that particular issue. But I make, I make the distinction that the, the press typically could look at these things if they so, choose, they probably wouldn't look at a city commission very often unless something came up, but here that won't be the case. There won't be press scrutiny.
Could I make a comment? When I applied for the commission, I, I was instructed to do the background check. So Nancy, you did the background check on me, so what did you do with those records and where are they? And who has access?
Didn't you see on the roster posted in the back?
Party on, baby.
I believe that it was destroyed, that, let me, let me back up. The form is sent over to the police department and the records clerk over there does the background check, that's her job to do, and she destroys the form.
So, there you go.
And I think one, one thing we can do as far as protecting that from disclosure, there is an exclusion from the public records law. For information submitted to a public body in confidence and not otherwise required by law to be submitted, where such information should reasonably consider confidential, the public body has obliged itself in good faith not to disclose the information and when the public interest would suffer by disclosure. So if in fact you oblige yourself not to disclose it, there's a reasonably good chance that you can keep it from, exempt from public inspection.
Can we make sure that in this process we're going through, that is the case?
Yeah, we can look at the application and make some changes to it, make it clear that it is in confidence.
Now, the, the issue about voluntary being required on the application, let's take a look at that.
That needs to be fixed.
Yeah, absolutely, we can fix that. That's the form that was taken from the other ones and we should deal with that.
May I ask you a question?
You need to come up to that.
I have to go, is there a mic?
It's just a very quick question. I'm just curious, why is it that you believe that the press will not have an opportunity unless you plan to keep these applications themselves secret from the press, which you cannot do?
It's a very short timeline.
Okay.
That, I mean, that is the case, it is a short timeline.
It's a short timeline. We have lots of applications.
We'll probably set it, we'll be setting up an interview process.
I think if they could find George Bush's DUI, they can, they can.
They can hit the bottom of some of them.
I don't think you.
Thank you for your comments.
Coming back then to, to our discussion here, is it going to be required, is it going to be voluntary?
Required.
I think if you want to keep them confidential, you've got to make it voluntary. If you make it required, it no longer is subject to that exemption for not otherwise required by law.
And we need to fix the application.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is you want to keep it confidential, keep it voluntary?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were there any points in the discussion that's come forward so far? The advertisement one is, is a good one and I, I don't know what the cost of the mailing is.
I, I see the commission this evening in particular getting a little bit wrapped around the axle.
Yep.
On a couple of things and I think it's primarily because a commission's role is to determine where to go and it's the staff's role to figure out how to get you there. And I think when you get into these, some of these subtleties like this, it's, makes it very awkward for the commission and the staff to work together well. And so I guess on this point, advertising, I think your direction to us is advertise far and wide within reason.
Right.
And I think Nancy, you, you heard from the commission, we're going to advertise, I think we have to advertise in a local paper.
Sure.
Certainly, and we would do that. And if for some reason the commission feels like the breadth of candidates isn't good enough or there's not sufficient interest, we can always expand that advertising.
My suggestion is to send out emails to the CIC officers. And that includes neighborhood association officers. Because of the, we have a list of.
Volunteers?
Volunteers, the ones that serve on formal boards and committees and commissions, that they, they also be emailed?
Yep.
At the bottom of the timeline, it lists all those various advertising techniques that we intend to use, so, and what you're saying, that the CIC and all the boards and commissions, that's all listed there. It's a very, very widespread.
Would it be possible to put something in with like water bills or?
I've already checked on that and for the month of January, they needed that for something, it was too late, they're already gone.
Go ahead.
I do have one other question, as far, if we could go back to the background check for just a moment, is, are you talking about only the, the appointment application or are you talking about this for the future, like in, in later this summer, we're going to be accepting registrations for the two positions that are opening up in the fall? Is this, are you talking about background checks just for the appointment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we, and that we will not be using the background check then for the elected?
No, that's correct.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's why I was making the distinction between the elected and the volunteer, the appointment situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, when I made my, when I made my appeal, it was full knowing that Nancy intended to contact the CIC. I'm a representative of a neighborhood association on the CIC, but the problem with that is that the time is such short time.
Yep.
That unless a CIC or a neighborhood is meeting to advise their membership, we don't really have a way of reaching our citizens anyway but some kind of direct mail.
Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, we have a new tool now that Nancy might be able to tell me, what's the name of that tool we have now where we're using for our press releases?
The flash.
The flash, we're, we're doing that, of course, the police department has a Facebook page, many of our other departments have Facebook pages, but Mr. O'Brien's right, you're, I mean, I mean, Oregon inoculates us with democracy by mailing our ballots to us and telling us even how to fill them out. And yet our voter participation is the same as states where you have to march through the snow and the freezing rain to get to the polls. I don't know what that says about our ambivalence, but I, I think what we have to do here is what's reasonable. And if we're going to write a letter to every citizen, we're going to be, it's going to be expensive and.
It's going to be very expensive.
Time consuming and I just think we ought to try to do what's reasonable to get the word out and I think that Nancy can saturate the media as much as we possibly can and get that done for you.
I think, if I might comment, I think the people we hope recruit from are people that are aware of things that are going on in the city.
Yep.
And they, they know that we're already probably going through a process, so my, my hope is we are going to end up with applicants who in fact have a feel what's going on in the city. And I think they will be responding. I am going to make a, a recommendation that anybody on the, and this could be true of the public too, but anybody on the commission, if they see somebody that they would, they would make a good candidate, to invite them, to submit. We surely want somebody that could deal with, I think, the healing that we have to go through and over this next year. So, I think that, that needs to be taken into account when we're looking at these applications. We have this very divisive process we've gone through and, and we've got, we've got to heal some wounds in, in this appointment process, so I think that's something to bear in mind when you extend out invitations for applications.
Absolutely.
I intend, based on people that I've, I've known and seen operate on some of our volunteer committees, go ahead and extend some invitations out. People that don't normally show up here, but have been very active in, as volunteers. So coming back to our list.
Excuse me, Mayor, one further comment on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just as an example, we had about twenty-five openings on boards and commissions this last fall, or that were anticipated for the December thirty-one openings and I believe they are either almost all filled or we're still doing a couple more interviews, but the process that we use will be somewhat similar to what we're going to be using for this and they, and we filled twenty-five vacant seats. So, the word got out and, you know, people pass things along too, via email, Facebook and so forth.
We've got a, we've got a February four-fourteenth where we are, as individuals, going to be able to review those applications. We have either February thirteenth or the fifteenth to conduct interviews. I, I don't want to, I don't want to be in an area in which we're conducting interviews and we're getting, we have lots of applicants and we get tired and we're probably not paying as much attention. I think we should have the option, should we have enough applications that we might want to go over a two-day period?
Yeah, maybe we can too.
That's your option.
To sit for, say, if we're going to have an interview process, going to take us three hours, we may not be fair in the process, so that's a suggestion I might have.
Nope.
Is that, is that acceptable?
Yep.
And then the appointment of a new commissioner, ed a commission being, and I take a majority means that, we're going to have to have three of us agreeing, at least three of us. My hope is that we're going to have four of us agreeing.
Yeah.
But people that might have been concerned of the current composition on the commission, whether it tends to vote, how it votes, we've got, I think, a strong guarantee that we're going to, we're going to find somebody that's going to be healer in the process, that is they're, they're not going to be tied up with the, the history and so forth, so my hope is of course that we have a unanimous support at, at one point as we go through this process.
Need a motion or anything like that?
I, I don't know, it requires a motion, I think we've given some directions, if any, but if anybody else here has comments or concerns about the process we're talking about, please come on up.
There's obviously some questions that need to be changed on the interview that don't apply to two thousand and twelve.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are pretty obvious ones. That's it.
Is that, is there anything else?
Do you want to email Nancy and she can make the changes?
Well, she.
Well, I think she can pick up.
Yeah, they were purposely left there.
They're specifically like a legislative.
So, did you want to go through the questions or, I mean, are just, at some point you will need to choose which.
You know, I mean, nothing precludes us from asking additional questions in the interview process, so I mean.
Just take out the ones that aren't applicable.
Right, right. Although each, each interviewee would need to be asked the same questions.
Same questions.
Right, absolutely.
Mayor, why don't we take a shot at updating those questions? We'll email them to the commission.
Yeah, let's do that.
If you have input to give back to us, give it, we'll make the changes.
That's great.
It doesn't have to be approved here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, with that, I think we're going on now to. Yeah, the appointment for the Urban Renewal Commission vacancy, Nancy. We have, well, I don't know, Nancy, if you have something to say, you can say it. I, I think we know an issue that's before us and I think it's something that we need to deal with.
Okay, go right ahead.
Our, our, our bylaws indicate that, well, I don't, it's not bylaws, but indicate that in the appointment process, that we do seek recommendations from the neighborhood association. I don't know that our bylaws excluded anybody else from applying. I think it, it's a mechanism of saying, these are people that were, that were supported by the. the neighborhood associations, association in question, the issue of course is, who is making that recommendation, and, and they have a, they have in their own bylaws, and indication that those recommendations come from the steering committee, we've also had a couple of people that have made applications, apparently had an appearance before the neighborhood association, so, my recommendation is that we look at all, individually all five applicants, and bear in mind that, what their bylaws say, and that they, we have the recommendation, recommendation for three of them that are coming actually from the steering committee, which is part of their bylaws.
Can I make a quick comment here?
Sure.
Since we are looking at a fifth commissioner, I think that we might need to kind of put the urban renewal, Park Place replacement on hold until that person comes in, and we can sit down and have a work session with the Urban Renewal Commission, and see if everybody feels like it's moving forward in a good way, do they want to make any changes, I mean, just to give the other commissioner a chance to kind of maybe have some different ideas and different approaches to how we, how we are doing.
We have no guarantee of another commissioner.
Well, we have no guarantee of
I mean, we could leave the office vacant legally until the next election.
Yeah, yeah, that's not our intent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just think that it gives
And we, but
It gives us a chance to kind of have something to work on and move forward on, and have it in a work session, and
The problem with that is, then we don't have, I mean, we obviously have items that the Urban Renewal Commission is working on, that should not be postponed
But it wouldn't be, we could still work on it.
I know, but, we'll be making decisions as a nod of, without having a full Urban Renewal Commission.
Well, we would anyways, because we don't have a city commissioner.
Well, I know.
So
I, I don't know.
I don't know, I just thought it would be something that maybe this new commissioner could, you know, have some input on.
We're, we're actually the elected body, we're the four that were elected by the electorate, the next one won't be, and I guess the one thing I wouldn't want to happen is for us to start looking at a candidate based on what he might feel should happen in the Park Place neighborhood and
Well
Representation, I, I mean, I, I, we're, we're the ones elected to make the decision, and I, I think we should proceed with it, I, I don't, I don't want to hold it off to what'll be another two months, and I guess we could, we could have the current Park Place representative sit in until a, until a decision is made as to who would be the replacement, but my, my preference is to move the process along.
I think mine is too.
Yeah, mine is too.
Yeah. We have five applicants, I mean, that, so, we got the application, and that's closed, right?
Yeah.
There's no other time for applications to come forward, so the issue is how do you want to treat the, the three or the five, I, I'm going to look at all five applicants personally, and I
You don't care what we think?
No, no, but the point is, you could, no, you could, you could look at, you could look at three or five of them.
It was a joke, I was just kidding.
No, no, it's just, it's just that we have the applications, and my intent is to look at all five of them, I, I would presume that we would weigh heavily on the bylaws that had been formulated by the Park Place Neighborhood Association, but I don't know that there's anything that we have that says only those recommendations come forward, that only those applications come forward, and I don't know if there's something that we, we need to review on that, I'll ask the, I'll ask the attorney's opinion.
We, we've got some memos that hopefully you've had a chance to, to review, and I tend to agree, I'm happy to answer questions, but, you know, they
So, I, I'd say we've got five applicants, we, we weigh the fact that three of them have been vetted and recommended by their steering committee, and that
Right.
That can operate in our, in our decision process, on an individual basis.
Well, also, I mean, it does say that you need to be in the Neighborhood, Park Place Neighborhood Association, it doesn't say that you have to report back to the Neighborhood Association or get input, correct?
On what?
Well, no, I don't know.
I don't know what
Like, what is the process for the representative?
You, you mean, how do they
The bylaws don't lay out how it is that the representative of the Neighborhood Association, whether or if they report back, you know, certainly you would expect, if you're a member of the Neighborhood Association, selects them, that they, you'd hear back from them, but there's nothing that requires that in the ordinance?
Okay.
Or in the bylaws.
When you look at section eight of the Park Place Steering Committee, or the bylaws of the committee, it says the Steering Committee shall nominate a minimum of three candidates, and that's the only provision given for us getting candidates from that Neighborhood Association.
Mm-hmm, but we have five applicants.
But it doesn't make any provision in here for those other two applicants.
But, our, what we operate under there does not say that it's confined only to those applicants.
Exactly, but I think we have to respect their bylaws.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can, we can weigh in, I mean, we can give weight to the fact that those are the recommended, the ones recommended by the Neighborhood Association, but I, I don't think we're in a position to reject applicants.
Well, I guess, I, to some degree, I agree with that, the problem though is, if you're going to put a, if you're going to put a, a weight, shall we say, on the three applicants that came through from the Steering Committee, then why accept the other two commissions, the other two applicants at all?
We haven't, I haven't seen, we, I haven't seen the applications, when we look at those applications, and we can say it, giving a weight doesn't say what, each, each, each one of us, what our weight should be, we see somebody outstanding that has a, a long record of citizen involvement in various committees and so forth, I don't know why that should be excluded from our decision making.
I have a question, it's hypothetical, so if we decide that we're going to accept five, the, a lot of the Neighborhood Association bylaws state that a person that shows cause in the neighborhood, the Park Place bylaws show that the person must live within, so what if we have some other, you know, say McLaughlin or something that says show cause, and so that means we could have somebody that doesn't live in the neighborhood, doesn't have a business there, they're just showing cause, they could apply, and we would have to consider them.
The applications are closed, and all these people have already, I mean, that's a good question for
Well, it's hypothetical for the future as well.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So, I'm wanting to know.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point.
And that's why I think we need to have a work session, and look at all of the bylaws for this urban renewal, and figure it out, I mean, why are we going to throw somebody else in this mess?
I hate to say it, but I thought that as a commissioner, I think this may even be prior to our new commissioners, that, that was a topic that we brought up in the past to deal with.
Yes.
I mean, in the not-too-recent past, I know it came up, so, why it hasn't come up until this point, because I know this, this has been a, a topic in the past, so, it definitely, the inconsistencies need to be addressed, because it's a mess.
It is.
Well, it is a mess.
It totally is, so maybe we should hear from citizens.
Well, I don't, I mean, this is a decision we're going to make.
Why not?
I still think we need to hear from
No, 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 don't misunderstand me, we've got a list of, we've got, I'm not, I'm not intending to exclude, exclude people who want to testify here, and, so, I'll ask Mr. Hunt and Ms. Hogan to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one problem I see here is that, you know, I, I don't see anything inherently unreasonable about how you are proposing that, that you proceed, except that it wasn't advertised that way, and who would know that's how you're going to proceed, anybody who relied upon these, these neighborhood association bylaws would never have guessed that, so I think it would, again, this is sort of like the thing with this business license ordinance, it's called moving the goalposts after the whistle is blown, and I don't think that's, that's, that's right. I want to, I want to focus a little bit on, on the city attorney's memorandum, he, he gave you two, and, and one of them dealt specifically with this issue, I think that there was three primary flaws in that, in that memorandum, first, that opinion confounded membership requirements for the PPNA with the selection process for URC nominees, those two are unrelated, the inference the city attorney found reasonable therefore was not reasonable, in fact, it's entirely non sequitur, secondly, the opinion erroneously stated, erroneously stated, that the steering committee did not expressly reject the two URC nominees discussed at the prior general membership meeting, that's also inaccurate, all five names were subjected to a vote at the steering committee meeting, the two names raised at the general membership meeting were each individually rejected by vote of the steering committee, the city attorney's reference to permissible inference, that at the steering committee meeting, the steering committee impliedly, as opposed to expressly, rejected the two names raised at the general membership meeting is accordingly immaterial and unnecessary to the analysis, those two names were expressly rejected, further, the steering committee voted to direct its chairman to submit three names, and three names only, those are the names approved at the steering committee meeting, those are the names you got, and in fact, the very wording of that letter of submission was dictated at that meeting by a majority vote. Third, the notion that the steering committee somehow silently ratified the ultraverus nomination of, of candidates at the general meeting is ludicrous, the steering committee took up the URC nominations in due course at its properly scheduled meeting, not all steering committee members were present at the prior general meeting, at which selection of URC nominees was not properly noticed, and which matter was ultraverus under the association bylaws, one does not need a law degree to understand that an ultraverus action at a general meeting cannot be ratified by the silence of steering committee members who are not even present, in any event, some steering committee members present at the general meeting did in fact, contrary to what the memo says, object that the URC nominations were under the PPNA bylaws delegated to the steering committee, if you were to kowtow now to those who crashed that meeting and have never been seen again, you're essentially endorsing not democratic rule, but you're endorsing Bolshevism, I now would like to say, under oath, that I took notes of the steering committee, and I testified previously as to the votes at your last meeting, three names, and three names only, were approved, being those recited in the letter to you from Steve Vanderbeek, the other two names were voted on and rejected by the steering committee, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what a tight old web we have, with such
Longish stuff.
No, with what, so much mean spirited people, sorry, I'm glad I'm a county resident, unlike somebody else who just said he's glad he isn't, I hope I stay a county resident. By default, my neighborhood, I'm now chair, and Tom O'Brien is co-chair, we are both CIC representatives, and we come back and report to our neighborhood, because that is what was required for us to do, and what good are the bylaws if you're doing, you're not paying any attention to them, and, and what the people that do participate? I don't know how disgusted I am with what's going on, I am really ashamed of what's going on with this community, and very glad that I'm a county resident, and hope I stay one, because no wonder my people don't come, they've had, this happened more than once, listen to what, you know, the bylaws say, if they're wrong, then let's correct them, but for right now, they haven't been changed, and this is what they did, they came to you with three people, I recommend you vet those three and see who's the best candidate, thank you.
Thank you.
William Gifford and Ingrid Rikkebok.
I bet Barbara.
Oh, Barbara, I'm sorry, I guess her brain's going too fast there for me, Barbara Rankin and William Gifford, Ingrid, I'll have you wait a bit.
I believe my name was called first. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and as secretary of the CIC, and serving in that capacity, I try to visit all of the neighborhood associations, just because I'm a glutton for meetings. I did attend the, the general meeting of the CIC, there's two points that I'm going to want to make, the, the general meeting of the Park Place Association, where the major, the majority, no, it was unanimous, there were no dissenting votes and no abstentions from the general meeting to accept nominations from the floor, furthermore, that the general membership, which to me is hierarchically above the steering committee, specifically said that they wanted the nominations from the floor submitted to the Urban Renewal Commission for consideration, in addition to whatever nominations would come from the steering committee, the other point to note it, is that there was a majority of the steering committee at that general meeting, and again, it was a unanimous vote, there were no dissensions, no abstentions from the vote to take nominations from the floor. The second point that I'd make, is that there is another option for the commission to consider, is that you don't have to accept anybody, you could deny all of them and give direction back to Park Place to give three additional names. I don't think that that's, that's without precedent actually, that if the, if, and the only two neighborhoods affected are, are McLaughlin and Park Place, because they have properties within the, within an urban renewal district, but I believe that there, there, if there, if the three names that were suggested from either of these neighborhood associations were not found acceptable, they could be all rejected, so, all five of the applications could be rejected out of hand, and direction could be given to Park Place to reconsider and give a minimum of three more names, just another option.
Ms. Rankin.
I'm Barbara Rankin, resident of Park Place Neighborhood, and this is a letter that I sent to the city commission and the city manager, at the previous city commission meeting on December 7th, it was announced that five people had been nominated to be considered as the urban renewal representative of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, and the next paragraph is pretty much repetitive of what you've already heard, my point is, why is it necessary to overstep the bylaws of the citizen group who have complied with the requirements, their requirements and given, their requirements, and given you three names, names with experience, integrity, honor, and a willingness to serve their city? If these other people were so eager to serve, why did they not give their names to the steering committee, where have they been for the last seven years, they haven't been around, I've been at many of the meetings, why are the city leaders so eager to accept them outside the protocol of the PPNA Steering Committee? If the city is eager to have volunteer and citizen involvement in the business of city government, it is critical that everyone have the right to express their ideology, and have it accepted as an opinion, among many opinions, following the rules and the bylaws of the organization which wish they are associated, just because we don't agree doesn't mean that we can't be considered, and I don't understand, if these people wanted to run, why they didn't give the steering committee, that was the protocol, it's confusing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With Ingrid, Rikkebok, and Nancy Walrus, come forward, please.
I'm Ingrid Rikkebok, and I live in the South End Neighborhood Association, and I'm really concerned about what's happening, I do volunteer, I serve on CIC, I go to the meetings, I try to get people to come to the meetings, I try to share the information from the meetings with the people, and I'm really concerned that, that there's a conflict between what the neighborhood associations do and what the city, you know, if, if you want to push it down from the top, then we need to know that it, that's the way it's going to be, and that we don't need to volunteer, because it's all going to, you're going to tell us what to do, if you want us to serve on committees, and you want to hear what we say, then I think If you want us to serve on committees and you want to hear what we say, then I think it should be coming from us and having you be able to listen. And so I recommend that you just look at the three names that were given by the steering committee of the Park Place Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nancy Walters, and I had some prepared comments for tonight, but I'm going to save them for another slow night.
It may be a while.
So Tom Guile, before he left, wanted me to make a point. I was not at the general meeting where the steering, I mean, the urban renewal nominations were brought to the floor. It was not properly noticed. It was not on the agenda, and so a number of us were unaware and had not attended. He said to remind folks that he objected. He is a member of the steering committee, and that he dissented from the vote, so there was dissent, and there were not a majority of the steering committee members present at that meeting. The other thing I just want you to consider is that...
You're talking about the actual, you're talking about the general meeting of the neighborhood association?
Yes, yes. The other thing I want you to consider is that I believe if you look at the chamber process, as well as the McLaughlin neighborhood, look at the other citizen appointee members, you need to consider, should you choose to accept nominations from outside of their normal operating procedures, just the impacts that could create even more division among other entities, including the chamber and other neighborhood associations. So I think that it goes beyond this one situation into other circumstances into the future. So what you're deciding tonight does have, could have effects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Or we can go back to our discussion?
Well, one thing that I did notice is, and I don't remember who said it, but there was two, only two neighborhoods on the urban renewal, because they are affected, but actually every person in every neighborhood is affected. So, I mean, that's another concern I have, is why do we only have just two neighborhoods on that committee?
Well, we do have an at-large position.
Right. So maybe we should have three at-large positions.
Well, I can talk about the logic. Yeah, it's not a topic for tonight. I mean, the logic was that the actual urban renewal boundary extended into both of those neighborhoods.
Right. And I understand that.
And that was the logic, but we also had an additional at-large citizen position that was identified in the process.
So I think there's been a lot of monkey, murky stuff coming up, and I don't know.
Well, I don't think, I mean, we've got our bylaws. Those bylaws can be, I mean, those, I don't think, they're not bylaws that apply to us in our urban renewal choice. That is, that is the constituted formation. We surely can visit them, but that's what we had.
Right, right.
And so talking about changing them and having more members on the urban renewal commission and increasing the membership to more than ten.
Or less.
Yes.
First is a question for staff, which is, have we ever, in the history of this city, or in the history of neighborhoods in this city, accepted applications beyond the recommendation of the official neighborhood association or the steering committee?
I think the urban renewal commission is the only one that I can think of offhand. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm speaking specific to, yeah.
Because just knowing the history of the urban renewal commission, where at the beginning it was just the city commission, the five members, and then it was, you know, and then it went back and forth, like, three or four different times. So it's only been in the last three years, since 2008, that this ten-member commission has been in existence.
Right.
And this is the first time, this is actually the very first time that the Park Place Neighborhood Association has come up for renewal.
Okay, okay.
And, yeah, so there is no history there.
I would comment that a prior existence of the urban renewal commission still had that same representation, Park Place, McLaughlin.
That was before my time, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, it wasn't before my time.
Okay.
And so that's a statement that they came back, I believe, with the same representation that they had formerly before.
So I want to chat just a little bit more on this. This is, we've had, all of us have had to make some really tough decisions up here, and had to have to hear from a whole bunch of different viewpoints in this city in the past couple of years, some of which have been very emotional, very hard, but I don't know that I've seen any decision that has brought emotion to the level that it has tonight. I mean, it's one thing to go to a meeting and be angry. It's one thing to go to a meeting and give your viewpoint on a topic that you're passionate about, when people are so embarrassed and frustrated to the point that they're almost in tears. And quite honestly, me sitting here listening to it, it's pathetic, it's embarrassing, and it does not help us move forward in this town. And I hope to God someday we make it some progress to move forward together as a community, and it has to happen. And, you know, we as a commission have to vow to do that. I think the mayor made a good point of saying that we commit to doing that for our selection of our city commissioner. Then please do it tonight with this decision, too. And I'm going to say that the bylaws state very clearly what the process is. I think that I was open to listen to the idea of accepting all five applications, but here's the problem with that. It really states, it really says that we have no value in those bylaws, that we can make any decision regardless of those. So then on the same token, I'm trying to think about the process that has happened in Park Place, which has been an absolute mess on both sides of the coin. I mean, I'm not, it's a mess. My, the stumbling block that I'm having right now is if the general membership of the Park Place Neighborhood Association wanted more applicants beyond the three, they could have changed the bylaws. They could have got the names to that group. There was a way to do it. And I think Kevin brings up a really good point. Regardless whether or not, regardless of whether or not you say there was a majority of the steering committee at that general partner, at that general membership meeting, even, let's just say even if there was. I don't know. I wasn't there. Let's just say even if there was a majority of the steering committee members there, they run based on the bylaws. So they're not going to object. Apparently, maybe Tom did object, but a steering committee member is not going to object to something that they completely know during the vote is outside of the bylaws. They wouldn't say a word. And if Tom did, congratulations for doing that, but if I was there, I would say, well, you know what? I don't even have to speak up because it's already covered in these bylaws that we've created, that we've agreed to. And that's going to be my decision. It's heart-wrenching to see this, and I hope we move forward. I really do, because that's all I can say. So I hope the commission agrees with me.
I agree with Iraqi in that, I think it was Ingrid that said, I'm very impressed that people from other neighborhood associations took the time to come and talk to this, address this point, when it, you know, it'd be easy to stay home. It's not your neighborhood. But her statement of, you know, are we going to govern from the top down or from the bottom up? And we cannot govern from the top down. This is supposed to be a democracy.
I don't want to divide a decision on this, and I think it's clear that the position I took is not, it's not acceptable to two of them. My comment will be that, and for the same reason, we need a healing process going on here, and I do, I do agree with you, that has to apply to the representation in the Park Neighborhood Association. I've got no argument there. I would say the bottom up would also apply to recommendations that are coming in from the neighborhood association itself. And so my suggestion was simply to have all five, and that we wait accordingly, recognizing only three of them had been recommended by the steering committee. That's my preference, but if we're not going to have, if we're not going to have three people agreeing to that position, it's not, it's not one that I'm going to, that I'm going to feel that strongly about, that it's not going to happen. It's just that you, you said that in the process, we can receive no other applications. I think there's a distinction between how many applications can come forward, and then you've got a set of those applications that in fact are recommended by the steering committee as according to their bylaws.
But, I mean, I'm dealing with the same, these two questions. The part that bothers me is if anyone in this city that participates in meetings and is aware of the process that has been set forth by the CIC and by the bylaws, both our bylaws and the individual neighborhoods' bylaws, there's no implication that there's another process for applications to come. There will be after tonight, if we allow it. And if we do allow it tonight, maybe that's fine, and then we deal with the individual problems. But I think that's a bad, bad slope to start on. I think, I mean, it's clear that after we make this decision tonight, we need to then promise to go back and deal with any of these problems from happening again. And whether that means, you know, having a citywide workshop where all the neighborhoods could get together to discuss the issues with the bylaws, or do we want to leave each neighborhood to do their own? I don't know, whatever that is, but it has to be done, but I, I just can't get there. And I guess the other thing is, even if I was supportive of accepting all five applications, there's no process for how we determine which ones are more weighted and which ones are, it just means we're going to choose between five, and it means they're all equal, and they shouldn't be equal. So there's no process for us to how to handle that.
Well, two were voted on at the general meeting, correct? And three come from...
No. And most of what I'd like to really clarify and point out to this neighborhood association is that I asked for the minutes from all of the meetings for the whole year. Reading through them, there was never mentioned in any of those minutes of the minutes being reviewed at the next meeting and accepted. We can't prove any of this stuff. It is not just hearsay.
Well, I, if this issue goes forward, I simply stated there was, there is the staff member that is the CIC, that is the liaison, staff liaison that was there, and that verified that that was the process.
But that's not Robert Shul's border.
Yeah.
And we can't accept it without some, you know, authority.
Well, you know, I think we can continue this debate on. I would suggest somebody put forward a motion.
Oh, Nancy's on that.
Well, that Nancy, but you can't put forward a motion.
No, no, I cannot. But I do have a suggestion, just another option for you to consider. And Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it's my understanding that Nancy Walters, who is the current chair, the whose term expired 12/31, that she can continue on as a member until the new person is appointed or she is reappointed, either way. And I would suggest, just offer the suggestion, that you allow her to do that for a period of time until you work through some of these issues with the neighborhood associations, with the bylaws, you know, the conflict of the resolution from long ago, and, you know, all those things. And then maybe two or three or four months down the road, when you have all that worked out, then you can go through the process again and appoint an urban renewal commissioner. Just a suggestion.
I need to comment on that. I don't think it will be that quick of a process. The neighborhood, the neighborhood associations individually had decided, yes, we're confining it into our own boundaries, or no, we're going to be more inclusive. I think if you look at the individual neighborhood associations, what had happened is those that are on the periphery of the city recognize that growth issues and those kinds of land use decisions had implications to the adjacent areas that might be in the, you know, the urban growth boundary and so forth. So many of those neighborhood associations that included membership outside of their boundaries are on the fringe. And there was, actually, there was long discussions in those neighborhood associations as to why they wanted to do that. I think, I know that their neighborhood association specifically, which is one of the, did not get reactivated, but actually set it up that way, and I believe there are others. I believe the fact that our county, our county spokesperson, from the spokesperson, who in fact is chair of the South End Neighborhood Association, that was a concern in that neighborhood association, that those people within the urban growth boundary, in fact, had direct input in the decisions of the neighborhood associations. So I don't think that we're actually going to resolve those issues in a three or four month thing. I think you'll find different neighborhood associations are going to want their own bylaws for very specific reasons. And my preference is that, that we make a decision, that we move forward on this process. I don't think we're going to help the healing process, that we're going to extend this issue out further. And so I'm just going to recommend a motion be forward, put forward.
Well, I would recommend that we look at all five.
I hear a second. Well, I would second it. I know how the vote would split two, two, and I'm not going to second it.
Mr. Mayor? No, you don't see a prevalence of the staff wanting to jump into this one, but, but I would say, and I'm going to say this from a point of some, probably a fair degree of objectivity, having served with different urban renewal commissions and city commissions in different cities and states. The urban renewal commission here is larger and somewhat more unwieldy than the others that I've worked with. And it's, I think it's probably mostly around the obvious big project, but it's highly politicized right now.
Yes, it is.
And my, my suggestion to you is that part of the problem here, it goes way back, but I mean, there are some inherent weaknesses in this existing set of bylaws that allow people who aren't residents, for example, to have input and so forth. And I think it's incumbent, frankly, upon the commission to exert leadership and say, we're going to, you're the elected folks, and they're really, these neighborhood associations, they do need direction from the commission on these bylaws. So I would recommend that you have your city attorney look at these bylaws, update them so they're fair across the board, they're equal, they apply to all of your neighborhood associations in the same manner, so that you finally, you kind of restore some consistency. I think these things have morphed over time, and you got, you know, really good people in the same neighborhood association that are completely at odds about what's fair. So that's in part because of the politics, but I would say it's, to the extent you can correct it with clear, understandable, reasonable bylaw changes, I think you should ask your city attorney to do that.
Well, I think the city attorney, I have some difference with that statement.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because I was there, I was there when the original neighborhood associations were created, and I, I went to those meetings when they were forming their bylaws. And there were, there were very good reasons why there were different sets of bylaws. Now, we have the specific case here where we're getting representation. We could, we could require, for example, that any, any representative, if we have it in a neighborhood association, any representative from the neighborhood association has to be, be within the boundaries. In this case, all five turned out to be that way. And so we can be specific in terms of appointments to an urban renewal commission. And yes, I think it'd be a good idea to look at some areas we would want commonality. I do not expect the neighborhood associations to adopt the same bylaws. And I would recommend that.
What I'm suggesting to you is a model set of bylaws that hit the fundamental points the commission's concerned about, about fairness, and you can still leave some discretion for that individual flexibility, depending on the needs in there, but at least, at least hit the framework, the individual, so there's some consistency for things like residency and appointment. I think that would get you a long way and help your...
Yeah, but that's not what's before us now.
I move to accept the three applications from... I move to accept the three applications from the Park Place Neighborhood Steering Committee in regards to the renewal-
If you're going to do that, then I think you better exclude the other two. I mean, I think it's got to be specific to the issue at hand. Only the three. You said the three, so if you're in a-
Only, I make, my motion is I move to accept only the three applications that were brought to the commission from the recommendation of the Park Place Steering Committee.
Here. Any further discussion? I think we've made our respective points. Call the roll.
Commissioner Mom?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Abstain. A vote passes two, one, one. And the reason I abstain is that we don't, we don't have, we don't want a conflict in this process that is going to further divide the-
Is that correct?
Mayor Neely? I think what we have is with your abstention and a nae vote, we have two out of four, so I don't think we have a majority. I think the motion fails.
Well, we'll do that again. You may have to wait till you get your new commission. Well, I'm in a deadlock. I, I'm not going to vote for something that I feel is problematic. I think, I think it's, I think, I think the decision is going to, you're going to have people that haven't been happy with the decisions of the steering committee that are in the Park Place Neighborhood that are going to come up and they're going to be, they're going to be angry. I don't, I don't think this is going to heal the vision.
Well, I don't, I don't think it is either, but the question is, is the mayor of Oregon City going to support the bylaws of our neighborhoods?
I am supporting, yes, no, I say, and we recognize the three people, we're, we're, the three of those people are recognized by the steering committee and it's a recognition of that fact. And we interview all of them.
So where do we go from here?
Well, we can interview all of them. Uh, I, we've got to go somewhere, or we might by default, by default, we may go into the processes that this gets kicked down, this can't get kicked down the road. I'm opposed to that, too.
We can't accept all of them unless there's a motion to accept all of them.
Well, there was, well, there was.
I know. So where do we go from here?
Well, it wasn't seconded.
Well, we don't go from here.
My, I mean, my guess is when we look at those applications, we're going to see that in terms of citizen involvement, you'll see the major involvements among the three of them, if we look at those applications. And we can have those, those slide applications come before us and we can make our decisions based on those applications and the interviews.
And I think you're right on that, but it doesn't address the point of the other, the other points, it just doesn't address the other-
Well, I say it does. We accept all applications and we recognize only three of them.
So again, where do we go from here? Because we're not going to accept three without three votes and we're not going to accept two without three votes. So where do we go?
And if we accept all five, we don't have a process for weighting it.
We wait for our fifth.
We weigh it individually. I mean, we, we do that, we do that when we accept grant applications, we wait them individually for the-
But that process isn't defined in this, in this process.
Well-
It is very well defined when we look at grant applications. We're given numbering systems, we're-
Yeah, and I might, I might be, I might be okay with that if we have some sort of weight system or, I mean, there has to be, I don't know if I'm going to be comfortable with that.
Well, we could always wait for that fifth person to come join us.
I, I'm not comfortable with that at all because I, I'm not convinced it's going to happen that quickly.
For one thing, I'm afraid, I'm afraid this process would somehow come into the process of selecting somebody to take the, to, to take the, the fifth position.
We're deadlocked.
Well, I don't know how we reintroduce a motion unless the, of course, we had both of them failing, so I, Robert's rule says the person on the losing end has, is the one that has to, is the one that has to reintroduce a motion and both of us are on the losing end, so I don't know. I don't know why you-
The first motion died for lack of a second, so I don't think that ever got to the point where it couldn't be reintroduced.
However-
The one that was-
But that's not, that's not going to, that's not going to be, that's not going to be reintroduced. I don't think the two people that weren't involved, I can't make the motion, number one.
Mayor, when we see the commission grappling for straws of compromise, we start thinking the same way and Mr. Kabizman and I just discussed briefly whether it might be reasonable to send it back to Park Place and ask them to review it, if they still feel it's the same three, if it's more, if it's less. That is sort of kicking the can down the road as well.
It is.
But I'm concerned that you're going to, that you're going to, if this is hard, the city commissioner slot is going to be, you know what I mean? This is, this is a, um, maybe a cooling off or something, I don't know.
Yeah. Can we bring it back at the next commission meeting?
Well, I think it's, it's going to boil down to, what, what I'm, what I'm going to suggest is that, I don't know how you develop a weighting category. I don't think you can fairly look at the applicants and say, well, now, now we're going to have a weighting category. Is, is there something that we could agree on in terms of how we apply weights to people that are in fact, I mean, we individually apply the weights, we still individually can apply weights of zero in terms of our decision making, but we do that. We do that.
I throw it out there as an idea, but I, I can't, I'm not sure I can get there. I just-
Because to me, we're, we're negating their bylaws.
So can we continue to, to move it to the next commission?
Do they have a meeting between now and then?
Is there a provision, can I, can I make a suggestion? I want this process to go on and we're, we're deadlocked. I'm going to ask the commission to, um, how do you say it, for, for a motion that I would put forward to, put away, how do you phrase it, put away Robert's rules of order? What's, what's the terminology, yes?
You know, step outside the normal rules, I guess.
And permit the, permit the mayor to make a motion.
How are you going to get a motion to do this?
No, no, you, no, no, this is, we're not, right now, right now, we're in a deadlock. Neither one of us can make, none of us can make a motion and I, I wasn't involved in the first thing you say, so. I'm going to make a motion for the, I'm going to make a motion.
Cathy hasn't made a motion, so.
No, 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 you have to be on the losing side of the vote in order to do it. That's, that's the issue, that's the issue for Robert's rules of order.
But they were on the losing side of the vote, the motion.
Both of them.
Both of them. And so, right now, right now, I'm, I'm the, I'm, I'm an individual that abstained and probably could be in a position to put forward a motion, but I can't do it because I'm the chair. And the only thing I'm asking is to give the right to make a motion.
You write it down and give it to one of them?
They can't make it.
No, they can't make, they can't make the motion.
Mayor, if they don't like it, you can still be deadlocked.
They could, yeah.
No, I understand what's going to happen.
It's someone on this commission to make a motion to allow you to make that motion.
And, and you can vote it down or not.
Okay, I want to make the motion that we allow the mayor to make a motion. I'll second.
Pass the gavel to the commission president.
Well, we, let's have the vote and, oh, for this.
Yeah, so that you, you are no longer the chair in making the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Well, he's going to be the chair, so the motion would have to come for me, I guess. I'll say, I'll make the motion saying you second it.
It's not a motion, you're the, you're the chair and can control the proceedings in that way and delegate to the, the commission president if-
Yeah, commission president, you're now, and, have we voted on the, we have voted on the motion.
No, so a motion's been called.
I made a motion to let the mayor make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mom, seconded by-
Do we need to do that?
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Neely.
Well, no.
No, it was me.
No, it was, it was, oh, yeah, you're right, it was Cathy, so, call for the vote.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Okay, I'm going to move that the, only the three members recommended by the steering committee be put forward. That's my simple motion and I'm going to talk about something after it, after it goes. I made your motion.
Did I hear that clear?
Exclusive of the other two.
Yeah, only, the word only, same motion essentially, I think, that the commission president put forward.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Mom?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Now, I'll explain my, I, I don't, I don't want this can kicked down the road. If, the, the rules require a majority of the vote. If, if any of us feel, if any two of us end up feeling that none of the three should be advanced, we can, we can vote that way. And I, I have no reason to believe that will be the case. I mean, we're going to have interviews, we're going to go through a process and if, if we're deadlocked at that point, we're deadlocked, period, because, because the, the actual, the actual positioning of that representative of the Park Place Neighborhood Association requires a majority vote and that's, that's not two out of two. If that occurs, then I think we're put in the position of waiting for a fifth commission member to come aboard. I, I don't want to see that to be the case. I will tell you that I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask some very, on my own questions, and they're not going to be questions on the list, but I'm going to ask some very probing questions on my own of all of those three members.
I think those are the acceptable.
And one of the, one of the reasons I will tell you is simply this, I made a recommendation that that, that the steering committee seek mitigation within the county. They rejected it.
Yes.
They weren't willing to even invite somebody to help them come together.
Yes.
The division, the division in this case is really not a division in, in this commission. We've never intervened in the process at all, other than me making a recommendation for innovation. The division is in the Park Place Neighborhood.
Sad.
It's a broken, it's a broken, it's a broken system.
Yes.
And I think anybody that's followed this or aware of it, and they weren't willing to mitigate, go through some effort at least to have the mitigator come in. And so when it comes to the questions I ask for each one of those three candidates, they're, I'm going to lead in that people that, the people that serve on these commissions, their, their values need to come in because when, when we, when we come in as an urban renewal commission, we're coming in in terms of, of authorizing monies to be spent that are, that are tax monies. And so values come in. I'm not concerned that somebody's opposed to a project based on a set of values. I am concerned when certain things don't come forward in, in, in representation, which I think is the case on the urban renewal commission. But having made that little poorly phrased sermon on my part, we'll go forward, but I'm, on all, on all three cases, I'm going to be very, raising some probably very sensitive issues. But anyway, we're going, moving on.
Oh, can I make a comment to that comment?
Wait, he's not the-
No, no, excuse me.
Can I just throw this back and in?
Yeah, we hold it. Thank you.
So I too will be making very pointed question to those three people because two of those people told me they wanted to shut down that neighborhood association because there was no participation in that association. Nobody was showing up for meetings. And that is very sad because now we have new blood that's showing up for meetings and want to be involved in things and they're being shut down and that's very sad. So that's, I will be asking a lot of strong questions. Thank you.
So, having gone through that process, we got some dates. Does the rest of the schedule meet with everybody's approval? I think that's the basic question we have. With that, we'll finally go on to another item.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for the, for the comments from the neighborhoods. Coming back to the order. Well, we got that, we got, oh, and I never, and when we did our, nobody drew anything from the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Call, the work of place?
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Now, to appoint for communication from the city management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reaffirm with the commission that the retreat timeline that we sent out to you is satisfactory. I know there were, were some concerns, but I think we've swaged most of those with our communications through email to you, so, does the commission have any other questions or anxieties about that? The goal setting update that you want to share? No? Everybody's good?
Well, I guess I'll just ask that the art commission topic is still on the list of-
Yes, it is. It's going to be, in fact, we added it today officially to the-
And the percent for art.
I believe the percent for art ordinance would be just part of it.
Okay.
Right, and it's never been dropped from the goals.
Okay.
It wasn't dropped, it's just that you had enough goals last year.
Well, honestly, I don't know that the percent for art was brought up when we put the arts commission on the table for our goals, so that's, that is kind of a new piece, but it is.
But it's part of that whole conversation.
Do, how specific were our goals in terms of hiring police officers?
Well, your, your goals as opposed to your milestones, that's the confusing part here because the goal for art hasn't changed. The milestone is what we're going to be updating on this goals session, this work session, so.
Well, one, one thing I'd like to have a discussion on at some point or another is that at one point, the city had two school resource officers, one serving the high schools and one serving the middle schools.
Well, I don't think we, did we act?
There was one that went between Ogden and Gardner.
Yeah.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can have Chief Conrad address that under my next reports with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you can send your questions in advance so he's ready.
Well, there's a question of whether this is so specific it shouldn't be in a goal, but I, I, I would like that discussion or goal setting session.
What is the discussion?
What, whether in terms of the next police officer hired, whether we want to set a goal for having a, another school resource officer. That can be discussed in the goal setting session. He can, he can discuss that during these reports, too.
Well, we could just call on the chief right now if he's ready, or we can have him report. I, I'm just trying not to keep amending your goals after you turn them into us because we're trying to-
No, I, I understand that, but every once in a while, you think of something that you forgot to-
Sure, absolutely. And you can always bring, you can always bring those up. Chief, you want to talk about that tonight or?
Yeah, I, I can speak briefly about it. I, I believe the mayor is right and that was before I started working at Oregon City Police Department, but I believe they did have two school resource officers going back and forth between schools.
That's when incidentally, the school was covering half of one of the positions, I believe.
Right. And just to remind the commission, I'm sure you're aware of this, is that when the school district was facing some financial hardships, one of the, the funding that they cut was to the school resource officer that used to pay, I want to say off the top of my head, forty thousand dollars a year, I believe it was the figure. And when they were no longer able to fund that, the city decided that it was such a viable position that we were going to pick up the entire funding for it, for the school district. So we do have, we, we commit one of our officers for the entire school year to the high school where the majority of our incidents happen.
Right.
And it's been a very, very successful program, very, very, very happy with it. Of, of course, we'd like to have another officer that would be able to assist in our current school resource officer, but I believe in addition to do that, we'd have to talk about hiring additional officers on the police department because our staffing levels right now are just getting to the point where we're able to do some fairly innovative things with the ten hour shifts and, and some other projects there, so.
It's not a goal that we have to accept, let me put it that way, but I'd like to have the discussion, I don't think this is the time to have the discussion, it could be done on our goal setting, it may not end, end up being a goal, but I have some specific reasons for bringing it up.
Okay, and if you can share those reasons with us in advance of the, of the retreat event, we can actually prepare for the discussion.
The use, the use of drugs has gone down in age tremendously.
Sure.
And they are, they, they're, they're becoming more and more prevalent in the middle school. And that, that's, that's my primary concern.
And, and my concern would be to give the chief adequate time to research that and gather information for you.
You bet.
And report back on, he may even have a recommendation that's different or similar or kind of a mixed-
Well, I mean, it's not a goal that we necessarily adopt, but it's one I'd like to explore.
The Oregon City Together Task Force should be part of that discussion.
Right.
So, um...
Yes.
Does the commission all want to add that to your, to the event, the midterm goal-setting? Okay. Nancy, do you have that?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
We're adding another, we're adding another discussion item to the midterm goals update, and I'd also want to remember, remind the commission that you don't have to get done in one day.
Yes.
But that we have been adding things, so we may not, we may not get done in one day. I just want you to...
I promise you, I won't add anything else.
No, that's okay. I just want you to know what that means.
Today.
Also, the staff, we, I unfortunately have kind of a long report tonight. I'm going to, I'm going to ask my staff members who are going to report this evening to be very succinct. We've been meeting now for over five hours, and personally, the city manager's ready for some cough medicine, so.
Yeah, let me, you know, does anybody want to break at this point?
Well, we're almost done.
He says he's got a long report, so what's on staff?
Well, I'm only saying, let me get into it. So, staff, you, you folks that are going to be talking tonight, let's remember the Glazer Rule and try to get it done in 45 seconds, okay? So I'm going to call on Nancy Ide first to report on precinct boundary changes.
You know what? It can wait till the next meeting.
Wow.
Okay.
That's very brief.
Beat that.
Beat that.
Okay, next is Denise Kai. She's going to report briefly on soundproofing for the chambers, a very brief report on that. And really, this is, I think, as much a perception of whether people can see what you're saying as it is they can hear, because we did test it out there, and the decibel meter doesn't indicate that they can hear anything, but I'll let Denise follow up on that.
So we did do a brief test. We had about forty people in the room at the time, and they were having a construction discussion. We did take a reading, and it didn't read anything.
Oh.
So, as far as conversation level without the microphones, it's non-perceptive out there, audibly. We do have the option of hiring an acoustical engineer to give you quantifiable results if you'd like. That adds about a five hundred to a thousand dollars for a site visit, and they can give us mic'd and non-mic'd audible measurements. We have the ability to look at some options to put some coverings on the windows and some additional soundproofing through the means of double-glazed windows instead of the singles that are there on the wall, gasketting and sweeps on the doors. The other option is, you know, the coverings to the windows so that the perception of visual is not available to people outside. There also are some high-impact options that are much more expensive that would put a double vestable, double-door situation so that it is double-soundproofed and visually impacted. So that does take into consideration a higher value in dollars for construction costs.
We're not recommending that. We're not recommending that last...
I guess, I guess the only thing that I have to say about that is, I don't care how many tests you do, I don't care what it says on the reader, if I'm sitting in the chambers up here as a commissioner, and I can hear what people are talking about during an executive session out in the hallway, which I can, then they can hear what we're saying.
I guess what I'm looking for is...
We don't need a study for that. I can hear it.
To what measure would you, are you looking for us to accomplish that goal? Is, I guess, what we're looking for?
Well, what measure do we expect people to hear in executive session? The answer's zero. It's an executive session.
Yeah.
Nothing they can hear.
Can I ask, why, why you just did non-mic testing?
Because at the time, mics were not available.
Oh.
They weren't utilizing them, but it was, sorry, about...
So why would we even use that as an argument?
It wasn't an argument, it's just a statement of fact at that point of measurement. I, I'm not...
There's an inch, well, first of all, I mean, there's some obvious things. There's an inch gap in the door. I mean...
And, and that was, that was an option that we've put out there for you folks.
I guess I don't think it's our business to decide how the problem's to fix. The problem needs to be fixed, period.
No, I, she's given us some options, and I think the last one, putting a double door there, was one that we weren't really recommending, but it was an option.
Mayor, we're not, we're not giving options tonight. We're only having a discussion under record.
We're just having...
So, so here's what I'm hearing. If the, all of you seem to have a similar concern about this, so why don't we actually develop recommendations and their price tag with each one?
That'd be great.
And, you know, we'll bring that back to you with a recommendation. We'll actually make a recommendation on one we think is the best for the money, that will achieve most of what you're after, and we'll bring that back, put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
And I, my comment on the, was...
Including but not limited to a new city hall.
If you're serious, I need a price tag.
I'm pretty serious.
Anyway, anyway.
That's a good place to start.
Yeah, the comment is, if we have executive sessions in here and they need to be, they need to be taped, I don't think we'd be able to do without a mic.
Okay, Mayor, I'm ready to move on with my...
Yeah.
That's not, that's not true. We, we... Use cord with a little recorder. We don't need a microphone system.
If you're in the speaker room?
In executive session, we don't.
Anyway, he's, he's trying to get on his next report.
Yeah, and I have a perfect segue, and that is into the quiet zone on the railroad tracks through town. And the city can, without any obligation, submit a letter of intent, a letter of interest, if you will, to ODOT and the state to see if we can establish a quiet zone. That doesn't obligate us to anything, but it starts the process so we can find out what would it cost, and how long would it last, and would it be effective? It's basically a probing to explore that as a possibility. And any of us who've been to the farmer's market on, at train time, can, at least I can certainly attest to the shock and awe that I experienced the first time I was almost, well, overtaken by the train. So if the commission is, the main thing this is concerning is that you have these goals for trying to get some vertical housing in your downtown, mixed-use housing, and it's really going to be, you know, a tough sell without some kind of controls on those trains for people who want to sleep in those, in those dwelling units if we ever get to that place. And so now's a good time to start sending that letter out. Before we sent the letter of intent, I wanted to at least notify you and see if any of you had any concerns with at least us exploring it.
No, that's all.
Okay, so we will proceed to do that. Nancy, you want to report on DEQ briefly?
I can save that till the next meeting.
Okay, moving right along. And then there's art project installation. You want to report on that as well?
Yeah, they, there's an art project that has been funded through money collected in honor of former Mayor Norris, and we've been working through the Clackamas Arts Alliance and an art selection committee on that, and the art is to be installed on January fourteenth.
And where's the site?
It's outside the city phone.
And, and underneath the porch.
So that'll be January fourteenth, and then I, the arts alliance contacted me, the staff person on the selection committee, about a dedication, and so that hasn't been planned yet, but we thought we'd update you on the progress of the...
And encourage you to come when we have the event. Are there any questions about this event or concerns?
No.
Okay. Also, I want to congratulate Mike Conrad here personally tonight for his accomplishment in his department of four complaints in a year. I didn't have a chance to tell this to Mike, but when I was a, a police officer, some of my colleagues got four complaints in a month, so.
Yeah.
And that was one person. So I feel really, this is an exceptional statistic, and it's, it's a testament to the leadership and the management and the department, and also the professionalism of the rank and file.
That's right.
And, and I'm a little bit on a limb here, because I think there's a tiny bit of luck involved when you have that many, that few complaints that happen to also be investigated independently and then unfounded. So, you know, we're going to stay vigilant. That's not always going to be the statistic, but it's a great one to have, and it's a good way to start the new year, so.
That's right. It's great.
Thank you, Chief. Also, Eric Underwood has been working tirelessly with doing all kinds of outreach. I know most of you have been kept up to date with his communications that are ongoing with Concordia and others. I won't go into that in detail, but I do want to tell you that we are now, Oregon City has now been accepted as a member of the Oregon Economic Development Association, and I credit Eric with that work, so another...
Yay.
And then Jim Lefler and I will be meeting Monday, next Monday, with the recruiter who's going to be starting a process for our new finance director. It seems a little early, but he's going to be in the jurisdiction anyway, and we wanted to show him the city because he's going to write up a profile, and to have him sell our community to the best candidates, I want him to have a feel for what Oregon City is, and we're unique, I think, in a lot of good ways, and I want him to be able to espouse those to the candidates. So we'll be starting that process next week. And unless anyone else, any other staff, we're good. That's all, Mayor.
Is it?
That?
You got appointments?
No, wait a minute.
Oh, yes, I sure do. Yes, we have, excuse me, now we're going to go to my report. I was in a hurry to get through this, and I've got things to say, and other people have things to say. We've got reappointments of Mike Mitchell and Don Smith of the Parks and Recreation Committee. There were no other, no other applicants other than people that were already there. Appointments of Fred Haynes and DA Hildebrand to the library board, one serving city position, another one at large, a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Reappointment of Chris Lugo to the Clackamas Cable Access Board, her term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Appointment of Blaine Meyer, who is the Chamber of Commerce's representative on the Transportation Advisory Committee, and the appointment of John K. Anderson to, to the position. The Blaine Meyer, both of their terms go into December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. And the reappointments of John McLaughlin, he pronounced it as McLaughlin, and Vicki, and he spells it G-A-J-O-N, and Vicki Yates to the Historic Review Board for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Other, other reports?
I have one from Metro, but I would, I should do it another time.
Okay.
Nope.
Did, did you want to make an appointment to the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition?
That, that's a request that has come forward, been asked to have an alternate to that position. I'm, I'm the position. The only response I heard from, was from Commission President Smith indicating that he, he works during that block of time, and I think it's problematic.
I'm pretty sure they still need, I'm sure.
Yeah. I did have a request, and I don't think there's no, there's no reason why the appointments have to be within, within the commission members. Mr. Underwood has indicated a desire to be an alternate, and I personally have no, I, problem with that.
Yay.
The only thing is, there was never an opportunity for other citizens to step up, but this is something that we need to move on, so with that, I will make an appointment of Eric Underwood to, to be an alternate to the Clam, Clank. So Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, did I get that right?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, because it's going to be during his employment, that you basically need to direct me to do that, and I'll make it happen.
Wait, no, 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 I, I make appointments.
Yes, I know. You can direct me to do that, and I'll be happy to do it.
Or you can just note that I'm appointment.
I just want to check that legal box.
This is a, no, this is a voluntary effort on his part.
People not even be paying.
He's walking out.
Yes, we'll make it happen.
If you please, that, work that out with him.
Absolutely, thank you.
With that, I adjourn the meeting.